Good morning, everyone. We want to welcome you back to the 413th regular meeting of the Environmental Quality Commission meeting. We will reconvene here at 8:32. And as we begin today, we'll let the record show that Commissioner Kyle, Commissioner Mosby and myself, Chair Kathleen George are all present. Commissioner Vice Chair Barasso had some urgent family business and will not be able to join us today. Director Whitman, before we jump into our first action item of the day, do you have anything for us as we begin?
Thank you. Good morning, Chair George and Commissioners for the Record Richard Whitman, Director Oregon DEQ. I really don't have anything. I'll just maybe set the stage a little bit. We've start you out with an action item this morning, which is a rulemaking on our Clean Fuels Program about how to accelerate the adoption of electric vehicles and low-carbon transportation in Oregon. And then we have a substantial update for you around the greenhouse gas reduction program, Oregon Climate Protection Program, followed by an opportunity to hear a little bit from the public about input about where we're at with that program development. So it's a lot of focus this morning on greenhouse gas reduction. That's intentional. We put these things together just to give you a little bit of a deeper dive in the work that's going on in the agency and with our partners on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And then we'll finish up today with the Director's Report and an update on what's going on in the Oregon Legislature in terms of policy development and budget down in Salo. So that's this morning and we'll then close the session and we've got an executive session with the Commission at the end of the day, our normal check-in on pending litigation. So that's what we've got in store for you today.
A lot, a lot to get through and so we're eager to get started. Well, we'll welcome then Colin and Corianne who are going to walk us through this action proposal for the Clean Fuels Program electricity rules. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair George, Vice Chair, well, I guess Vice Chair Barasso is not with us this morning. Members of the Commission, for the record, I'm Colin McConaughey. I manage our Office of Greenhouse Gas Programs here at DEQ and we're here this morning to propose rules for the Commission to consider adopting that would make targeted adjustments to how our Clean Fuels Program incentivizes one particularly important clean transportation fuel, which is electricity. Corianne will walk the Commission through this proposal shortly, but I think Cory and I both want to also take the opportunity in front of the Commission to provide an update on the status and the really the successes of this important program. At a very high level, our Clean Fuels Program is one of Oregon's most important programs to address greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon. It is squarely focused on transportation and transportation fuels, which account for really the largest single source or sector, if you will, of greenhouse gas emissions from Oregonians. This program requires reductions from Oregon's transportation fuels by mandating that over a 10-year period between 2016 and 2025 that there be a 10% reduction in the overall lifecycle greenhouse gas emissions from transportation fuels supplied in Oregon. Also, before I hand it over to Cory to further introduce the program and our proposed rule changes, I want to highlight for the Commission one other important connection between the Clean Fuels Program and really something that the program doesn't expressly address, but that is nonetheless an important, makes it an important tool for our state and for the Commission to address pollution more broadly. I think as the, as the Commission heard back in January, the Clean Fuels Program is one of our core programs or tools really for DEQ's broader diesel strategy. This program incentivizes and accelerates the adoption of alternative fuel technology, which reduce not just greenhouse gases, but also address tailpipe pollution and certain elements of actually this electricity rulemaking that we're proposing today are specifically designed to remove barriers for electric vehicle adoption in the medium and heavy-duty vehicle space where electrification will have a more pronounced improvement on diesel pollution. These proposed rules will allow some of some entities to receive clean fuels credits upfront, addressing the incremental cost of electric vehicles and ultimately leading to long-term savings for fleet as well as reducing diesel pollution. With that said, I want to take just one more moment before I hand it over to Cory to acknowledge the significant work that Cory and her team have done to quickly develop the proposed rules that we have here this morning for you. All, they've done this work all while concurrently running this program and that's an incredible amount of work to do all at once and it's really a very talented and passionate team that Cory leads and they have all chipped in to help with the important task of developing these rules. So in addition to Cory, our Clean Fuels Team includes Bill Peters, Stephanie Summers and Kiara Winnens and Bill, Stephanie and Kiara all helped Cory develop these rules. I just want to really acknowledge their, their help and their support to pull together this proposal. So with that, Commissioners, I'll hand it over to Corianne Wind to provide the Commission with a bit more of an update on the Clean Fuels Program and what it is before she dives into then the proposal and the action item we have for the Commission this morning. Thank you and I'll hand it over to you, Corianne.
Hi, good morning, Chair George and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Corianne Wind and I am the Clean Fuels Program Manager. It is my pleasure to present to you today an update of the program as Colin mentioned, as well as our latest rulemaking effort for your consideration. Next slide, Stephanie. Okay, so before discussing the rulemaking action item, let me present you with a few slides about the progress that has been made in the program since its beginnings in 2016. So I'm happy to say that the Clean Fuels Program has reduced almost 5 million tons of greenhouse gases through the third quarter of 2020. In each year, all of the regulated parties have been able to comply with the standards and have banked collectively over 700,000 credits for future use. The carbon intensity of the ethanol and the biodiesel that is used to blend with gasoline and diesel in Oregon have continued to decrease and there has been a significant increase in the blending rate of biomass-based diesels with regular diesel fuel. Renewable forms of diesel, propane and bio methane have all been introduced to Oregon since the beginning of the program. And it is also allowed, enabled the state's utilities to invest more than $20 million in transportation electrification efforts. And just last week, we launched the new Oregon Refuels Reporting System that consolidates reportings for regulated parties that are subject to both the Greenhouse Gas Reporting Program and the Clean Fuels Program and the Clean Fuels Program into a system, into a single system. And this was enabled through the adoption of rules that we brought to the Commission last year with jointly between the Greenhouse Gas Reporting Program and the Clean Fuels Program. And lastly, the reports for the last quarter of 2020 are due at the end of this month. And so very shortly, we should have data for the first full five years of the program. And I think it'll be really a significant testament to the program about the successes that we've had as we begin this the program. Next slide, please. Okay, so I also wanted to highlight a few of the local projects that provide clean fuels in Oregon or are currently proposed. So these include facilities that currently produce ethanol and biodiesel and biomethane. In addition to some of the most notable facilities that are being proposed to produce renewable diesel, sustainable aviation fuel and renewable hydrogen. You can see that these projects are located throughout the state and take advantage of the multiple opportunities that the Clean Fuels Program provides for these investments. The proposed renewable diesel projects alone could replace the states' entire needs of petroleum diesel that is actually used in roads in a single year. In addition, the Clean Fuels Program supports over 2,000 electric vehicle chargers, over two dozen compressed natural gas dispensers and over two dozen propane dispensers that bring clean fuels to fleets and EV owners throughout the state. Okay, next slide. Focusing now a little bit more on electricity. So I'm sure that you're all aware of the numerous discussions that are taking place around the state's aggressive electric vehicle adoption goals. So I've listed here a few of them that we participate in. And what that has really come to, come to bear for, for myself in participating in multiple of these efforts is that it's become very clear amongst, in the conversations amongst the stakeholders that the Clean Fuels Program is a key component. Okay.
There we go. Go right ahead, Corianne.
Okay. And so it is become very clear in the conversations amongst the stakeholders that the Clean Fuels Program is a key component in incentivizing transportation electrification, primarily because it is one of the few programs that can fund fleet conversions and infrastructure. These efforts involve multiple state agencies, electric utilities, automakers, electric vehicle charging providers, fleets and community groups that all see electrification as a clean, as a way to a cleaner transportation fuel, a future. The Clean Fuels Program is critical in that it provides the long-term market signal that is critical to making the goals a reality and is a natural complement to the zero emission vehicle regulations that are implemented by the Air Quality Division that then provide the regulatory backstop to ensure that Oregon has both the cleanest vehicles and the cleanest fuels available. So before I leave this slide, I want to point out to you the multi-agency Every Mile Counts effort in the top right corner. You'll be hearing more about this in the next agenda item, but I wanted to point out here the role that the Clean Fuels Program plays in that effort. So I will be collaborating with the Departments of Administrative Services and Energy to encourage our state sister agencies to consider transitioning to more clean fuels within its fleets through its procurement processes and contracting processes and as they develop and implement their programs and policies. So for example, we've already worked with DAS last year to restructure the state fuel contract to be able to bring the cost of renewable diesel down to be almost at parity as the same price of fossil diesel, really enabling a lot of the state's public fleets to switch to this fuel. We will begin a new project with both DAS and Department of Transportation to develop a fleet transition plan as part of its sustainability effort that then can be rolled out to all of the remaining of the fleets amongst the state agencies. And we are also working with ODOT to work with transit agencies throughout the state to use the State Transportation Improvement Fund to expand cleaner transit options. So these are just a few of the examples that we look forward to the effort to increase the state's demand for clean fuels and it promises to become a central part of its lead-by-exemple initiative. Okay, next slide. So now, let's look, let's look to the future of the Clean Fuels Program. Here you can see a high-level work plan for the program through 2022. It features a set of rulemakings at the top and the bottom of the chart that will expand the role that the Clean Fuels Program plays in to incentivize electric vehicles and to achieve even greater greenhouse gas emissions out through 2035. In between, you'll see a set of studies that will provide the technical basis for how the future Clean Fuels Program should be designed and an analysis of how implementing the Clean Fuels Program can improve local air quality and provide social and health benefits to all Oregonians. These findings will be presented in a formal program review that is due to the Legislature in February 2022. So you can rest assured that we will be very, very busy in the next few years designing a program that can build off its early successes and remain a driving force in Oregon's climate future, climate policy into the future. Let's see. So let's see, so I think that is the conclusion to the program update portion of the presentation. Do you care if like, if you have any questions, I can answer any of them at this time or I could continue.
Any comments or questions at this point? All right, go ahead. Let's continue with the presentation.
Okay, so let's let's begin then the presentation for the Clean Fuels Program Electricity 2021 Rulemaking for Your Consideration and Action Today. So as we began this rulemaking, it was really important for the Clean Fuels Program team that we remind our stakeholders that these are the principles that we use to guide our decision-making. We believe that applying these principles throughout the program, not only during rulemaking, but in everyday implementation of the program has led to many of its early successes. Grounding the committee's discussions on these at the outset of this process was critical as we attempted to explore many of the ways to expand the program. So most importantly and foremost for the Clean Fuels Program is the reminder that credits in this program represent actual greenhouse gas reductions. Next slide. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I got a slide ahead of myself. So DEQ began its stakeholder engagement process with a pre-rulemaking brainstorming effort with stakeholders that helped in setting the scope of this fast track. There was a high level of interest in the meetings and we received a lot of input from stakeholders. And I'd like to add at this point here too, that this rulemaking featured a lot more participation from the general public and community organizations than in any previous review.
Corianne, I think we're experiencing some interruption in your feed. Are others experiencing that? It sounds like right now we can't hear you and that's happened a few times during the last.
Pardon, Chair George?
Yeah, we seem to be having trouble. You're cutting in and out for us. So that's, I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're not hearing kind of every other sentence here in the last couple minutes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it actually, it said that my signal was weak, so I think it's a probably a signal issue at one point. I'll try, I'll back up to the beginning of this slide then. So I just wanted to point out that to be, that DEQ began this, our stakeholder process with a pre-rulemaking effort with stakeholders that helped in setting the scope for this fast-track rulemaking. So Advisory Committee, excuse me, a rulemaking advisory committee of 17 members was convened and met six times over three months. There was a high level of interest in the meetings and we received a lot of input from stakeholders. And I'd like to add that in this rulemaking featured a lot more participation from the general public and community organizations than we've had in any previous rulemakings that I've been involved with. And I see this is a very good thing. We had a much more broader conversation about how it would, the program would impact both the regulated parties as well as Oregonians around the state. I believe this, you know, it's the, the increased participation was largely due to switching to the all-virtual format and as well as the heightened profile that was brought to the Clean Fuels Program by the Governor's Executive Order on Climate that was issued last year. So during the formal comment period, we received comments from 38 entities, which were largely supportive of the changes that were made that are being proposed for the program. The proposals being presented to you today largely reflect these comments. Okay, next slide. So the goal of this rulemaking was to advance methods to accelerating the generation and aggregation of clean fuels credits in order to advance transportation electrification. So throughout the process, there were five themes, primary themes that emerged through the discussions and appear in the proposals before you. And we'll be exploring these items in the following slides. Next slide, please. The first theme is that the Clean Fuels Program should encourage new types of electric vehicles by allowing for the generation of credits. So in this rulemaking, we are proposing to add two new categories of electric vehicles that will be allowed to generate credits. These are a variety of electric cargo handling equipment and shore power systems that are used for ocean-going vessels to plug into while at port. Being able to generate credits for these vehicles will help distribution and warehousing facilities and the ports electrify their activities. We're also proposing to add a new administrative process to speed up the way that new electric vehicles can generate credits in the program. Since we are seeing a lot of innovation in the medium and heavy-duty vehicle space such as airport ground service equipment, garbage trucks and agricultural tractors, as well as new micro-mobility applications such as e-trikes, e-bikes and e-scooters. And having these new applications be able to generate credits in the future of the program will, it'll be playing just an increasingly important role. And we believe that the Clean Fuels Program should help those, advance those technologies. Next slide. So the second theme of the, of this rulemaking is that the Clean Fuels Program should incorporate the most current information regarding the current, excuse me, regarding the carbon intensity of electricity used in Oregon. With the recent closure of the Boardman Coal Fire Power Plant, there was an need to reassess what the best way is to calculate the carbon intensity of electricity. So we are proposing to switch from a five-year rolling average to a single-year value to quicken the pace that emissions from Boardman is replaced by cleaner sources. We are also proposing to replace Boardman's emissions with an unspecified mix for the next two years until data about the actual replacements are known. And lastly, now that more than a quarter of the state's electricity has a utility-specific carbon intensity, we're also proposing to remove that portion of the load from the statewide mix to better reflect what remains. We believe that these three changes to the methodology will produce a carbon intensity value that is more representative of current emissions and thus provide a better estimate of greenhouse gas reductions.
Commissioner Kyle.
Thank you. I actually just had a clarification and I thought, Corianne, you'd be able to tell me. The shrinking from a five-year rolling average to a single-year average, could you give a little bit more background on how, why you think you're able to do that shortening, a shorter averaging time now more reliably than the, than the longer term? What has happened in the last couple of years that now gives you confidence that you're able to kind of have a single-year average that is more reflective of current conditions than in, than the five-year? So it's kind of more of a historical question around the calculation of this, this number.
Yes, Commissioner Kyle. So when we started the program, you know, like, like you kind of referenced, we didn't have a lot of experience in how to, in the information to inform this number. And so we settled on a five-year rolling average. Just, I think the concern at that point was, you know, the variability in the water years and the hydro system and, you know, the ups and downs that could occur with that. But as we have seen in the past several years of implementing the program as well as, you know, historical data out to 20, you know, previous to the program too, it really has become evident that because this is a carbon intensity standard and not just an emission standard, that there is really not that much variability in the carbon intensity. And so as we analyze, you know, we have your data. We use the data that the utilities submit to our greenhouse gas reporting program. And so we use that exact same data and we can see that, you know, that the, the annual emissions, you know, are, it's, it's easy to capture those annual reports to create the single-year value.
So just as a follow-up, so it has to do with the intensity, not the consistency of low-carbon fuels in the market at any one time. It's more just the intensity of the fuel at any one time.
Well, Commissioner Kyle, so it is, I mean, it is averaged over a year, right? So it's, it's, it's an annual number that the, that the utilities are reporting to the state. And that, you know, I think why we originally started with the five-year rolling averages is because we thought there would be more variability. But that the, the data has really borne out that there isn't that much variability. And what I think is really key now to be able to switch to the single year is, it's really was kind of highlighted by the closure of Boardman, right? So it's a high-carbon, it was a high-carbon facility with the coal that was burned, being burned there. And, you know, if you wanted to get that dirty, you know, dirtier electricity mix out of the average sooner, you know, the switching of the five, from a five-year rolling average to the single year really facilitated that.
Thank you. I also had a kind of a more probing question on the third point there, which is to remove the utility-specific load from the state average. Could you expand the definition, you know, expand the explanation for that and the rationale for that as well, please?
Sure, Commissioner Kyle. So what, when we started this program too, we built into the program a mechanism to either have a statewide average grid mix electricity or we allowed individual utilities to specify, you know, the carbon intensity for theirs, for their utility. Because of the, originally, we really didn't know what the uptake on, you know, a utility asking and requesting a utility-specific carbon intensity would be. You know, but with so many of the utilities in the state of Oregon being, you know, BPA customers and being able to access this very low-carbon electricity source, we did see approximately two dozen of the, primarily the consumer-owned utilities opt into this provision, right? They, because they are BPA customers, they can show that their carbon intensity of their, of their electricity is very, very low and they have opted in. And so over the years, as more of these consumer-owned utilities have opted in, it's really, it became evident that, you know, now upwards of about 25% of the load in the state is on these utility specifics. And so it became an accuracy issue of, you know, if you're considering that utility specific in the statewide mix, right, that it was time to be able to take that, that utility-specific load so it doesn't get double counted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mosby.
Chair George, I've got two questions and you may have answered one of them talking. My question, you talked about you've replaced the Boardman. We're soon going to lose some dams on the Klamath River Pacific Core operates. Are you got plans? Will we be able to replace the intensity there?
Commissioner Roseby, I, I'm, I'm not sure. Okay, so, you know, we do evaluate the carbon intensity of the fuels on an annual basis. So as the, you know, the, the, those mixes are reported to our greenhouse gas reporting program, we will be able to see what the impact of the changing mix will be in the future. See what the impact of the changing mix will be in the future. We don't have any specific plans right now, but we we can as we we see that data coming.
And the other question on the previous slide, you. I I really liked what you're you're finally discussing electric ocean going vessels. Obviously, right now it's at the dock level at the port when they come in. But it it leads me to believe, are we seeing anything when we see these barges? These tugs pulling barges up to Columbia and then they obviously. Go out in the ocean and and go up and down the the west coast here. Are we seeing any? Large batteries or any solar powered? Are we seeing any barges doing hybrid kind of things there once they get away from the from the dock? From birthing at the dock or is there any? Ongoing movement to at least make some of these vessels hybrid, especially on the Columbia River where you're wouldn't. You know, you wouldn't be that far to shore or to a nearby town or a local port if you. Were running out of electricity, but you know, you think about solar. And you think about large, I know the battery life is getting better if they. Could look at some hybrid things, any any? Involvement or new techniques that are coming online that will help electrify these ocean going vessels?
Oh, Commissioner Mosby, absolutely. I think I see a lot of kind of innovation in in Europe, in the Scandinavian countries. You know, so much of their freight movement is in those large. In the large ships. I've seen new electric as well as the ships that are retro that are fitted with like little wind turbines. Right on the the ships themselves and that can like recharge the batteries as as the ships are undertow. I haven't seen too much on the barge side. But tugs, yes, ferries, yes. I think there's a proposal in the Portland area to have a commuter ferry that is proposed to be electric. You know, so those smaller scale. But I think what we're really trying to do here is allow the infrastructure at the port, right, to get into place so that when the ships do. Come in that there'd be the infrastructure to be able to support that.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Stephanie, next slide. Okay, so here, so the third theme of the clean fuels of this particular room making is a theme where. The clean fuels program should really be used to incentivize the use of renewable electricity. As much as possible to charge electric vehicles. I think there's a lot of concern about, you know, as more and more electric vehicles come to the market, whether they're existing, you know. Electrical system and grid can support that. And that, you know, that in order to actually really maximize the decarbonization of the transportation sector. The electricity for these electric electric vehicles really need to be renewable. It is a key path to deep decarbonization of the sector. So to accomplish this, we are proposing to allow entities to retire renewable energy certificates or RECs. In order to access this zero carbon electricity. So we already accommodate for say, for example, if there is a EV charger that is hooked up to a solar panel or something renewable. To be able to claim that zero carbon electricity, but there are many cases where that's not feasible. And so this is again a proposal to allow the entities to. Access offsite, non contiguous kind of sources of renewable electricity in order to generate credits. So these credits will be known as incremental credits. And they represent additional credit generation if the electric charging of those vehicles are zero carbon. So first, let's look at the gray wedge of the chart. And this represents the base credit. So these are credits that already exist in the program today. That are calculated as the difference of the carbon intensity between the fossil fuel. So in most cases gasoline. And the average Oregon grid electricity. And so you can see that out through twenty twenty five that the generation of these base credits continue to grow. As the number of electricity, electric vehicles increases. And then now let's look at the green wedge of the chart and this represents the incremental credits. These credits are calculated the off the difference between the carbon intensity of electricity. And zero, right? So whatever that average grid mix is to zero, so it brings it down. So the generation of these incremental credits, as you can see, also grow out to twenty twenty five. And they represent approximately half of the amount of the base credits, just, you know. In in general terms. And what's important again to re to remember is that the credits in the program equate to a ton of greenhouse gas emissions. And so as we encourage more credit generation by the use of renewable electricity. We're also seeing actual reductions in emissions as well. And additionally, as credit generation increases in the clean fuels. What it also does because of the market mechanism of this program, it brings down the cost of the for the regulated parties to comply with the program. Next slide. Okay, so to illustrate how this provision would work. And why it's beneficial to both the entity and to the environment. I've created an example here highlighting Trimitz Max Light Rail System. So in the first row are the base credits, right? So this is what the Trimitz currently generates. For the electricity that is used to operate Max. If these, in in this case, they generate sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty base credits. And if those credits are sold to the market, the in the average credit price of these credits. For the most recent month is a hundred and twenty five dollars per credit. Then the revenue would be just about two million dollars. So this is revenue from those base credits. What the second row then is is the incremental credits. So if Trimitz would generate. If they decided to purchase Rex to cover then the amount of electricity that is used in Max Light Rail. Then you could offset. You could generate additional credits. So if they purchase Rex at a cost of approximately, you know. Our best guess these days is about five dollars per megawatt hour. So the cost to purchase the Rex would be approximately two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. But then by retiring these wrecks, you would result in the generation of an additional eight thousand six hundred and ninety incremental credits. Right? And then if you sell those credits at the market price of a hundred and twenty five dollars. Then the revenue would be from that would be just over a million dollars. Right? So by just subtracting the cost of the purchasing of the Rex, Trimitz is netting, you know, about, you know, eight hundred and thousand, eight hundred eleven thousand dollars off of this transaction. This provision is not, you know, just limited to light rail in the case of Trimitz. They can also use it. As a provision for the electricity to use to use that to charge their new electric buses. And they continue to increase investments in in those in the new electric buses. We are also proposing that an entity could choose to participate in a voluntary green power program that is. Through their utilities to access that claim to that zero carbon electricity as well. And generate incremental credits in that matter. So for example, in Trimitz's case, since they participate in PGE program to purchase a hundred percent clean wind energy. Adoption of this room making could help them increase revenue that could then be used to invest in even more electric vehicles and further decarbonize their fleet. Any questions here?
No, we're not seeing any. Go ahead.
Next slide. Okay, so what this chart shows is who can generate the electricity credits in the clean fuels program. So we are proposing that for the most part, the parties that generate the current base credits. Will also be eligible to generate the incremental credits. The one exception would be that for in residential charging. Where the electric utility can opt in to generate those credits. And then unclaimed credits go to a third back, the third party backstop aggregator. The current backstop aggregator is the fourth mobility fund and they work with DEQ. We've been working together for the past three years. And then the funds, the the revenue from those credits in the backstop aggregator pool. Is used to fund projects and programs to expand awareness about electric vehicles. So in the case of incremental credits. The the electric utility can also opt in to generate those incremental credits. And then the unclaimed credits would go to a new entity called the incremental aggregator. Next slide. So the selection of the incremental aggregator would follow the same process that we use to select the backstop aggregator. So DEQ will issue a request for proposals that outlines what the responsibilities of the incremental aggregator will be. And then select the best applicants. The incremental aggregator will be required to purchase and retire Rex. To sell the credits, to develop and implement programs and projects to encourage electrification. And also to submit an annual report on their results. In addition to the residential credits, the incremental aggregator will also be allowed to generate incremental credits for any non residential. Charging that remain unclaimed. So for example, if there is an owner of a public charger and that owner does not claim the incremental credits. Then the incremental aggregator will be allowed to. Next slide. Okay, so what is unique about the proposed incremental aggregator is that the revenue from the sale of these credits. Will be required to benefit environmental justice communities. So during the rulemaking process, DEQ received significant input from stakeholders. That felt that the incremental aggregators portfolio should be focused on addressing equity issues related to transportation electrification. So in order to implement this, we are proposing to convene. The CFP Equity Advisory Committee. So it'll be a standing committee that will provide guidance to DEQ to implement this part, new part of the program. And this would be a significant step forward to ensure that investments equitably distribute benefits. And address the needs and interests of communities that are most vulnerable to the adverse effects of air quality and climate change. At this time, DEQ is unable to estimate the amount of money that will be raised with this new provision. But we are hopeful that this fund will play a meaningful role as we move into the future and as more electrification of vehicles occurs. And while that and while this part, it's not so then the next part, so it's not included in the regu- in the regulation. But the discussions in the room making advisory committee process, it was very robust between the stakeholders and utilities. And here, I I just want to call out that both Pacific Core and PGE, Portland General Electric. Have committed to dedicate at least half of their funds from the sale of their incremental credits. To also be used to specifically benefit environmental justice communities. So we have the part that is in the incremental aggregators as well as this additional investment from the utilities as well. And we very much look forward to continuing our collaboration with the utilities and the Oregon Public Utility Commission in the use in the expenditures of these investments. Any questions?
No.
Okay, next slide. So the last thing that I wanted to cover here is is the theme that clean fuels program should be defined. To incentivize the electrification of medium and heavy duty fleets. We are proposing a new provision that we are calling advanced crediting. Whose aim it is to create an incentive to speed up the transition of the medium and heavy duty fleets. And to offset the many costs that are associated with that. So in the current program, credits are generated when the fleet reports to us. On the amount of electricity used to power its vehicles. That is a quarter by quarter basis. So they submit their report and then they generate the credits. What we're proposing here is that we would issue credits in advance and they would be normally generated. And up to a six years worth of credits. Upfront, once the vehicle is put into service. And we do that by estimating the amount of electricity that would be used over that six year period of time. So the entity can then sell these credits to offset. Its upfront costs or for investments toward towards additional EVs. And thus creating a virtuous cycle of generating more credits for the program and more revenue for the fleet. The entity would then have up to nine years to pay back the credits that were advanced to them. And that payback is done in the in the reporting, in the quarterly reporting of that electricity. So instead of generating more credits, it's being paid back of the initial credits that were advanced to them. At this time, DEQ is proposing that advanced crediting be available only to public agencies. Such as port authorities, transit agencies, school districts. And fleets that contract with public agencies that provide a public service such as garbage trucks. This targeted approach is specifically designed to align with other DEQ efforts such as. To support the medium and heavy duty zero emission vehicle memorandum of understanding. And the every mile counts alternative fuel study. DEQ believes and has received. Strong support from stakeholders that this new provision will be a significant addition to the agency's strategy to reduce diesel emissions.
Corianne, would tribal fleets be eligible for this type of crediting?
Yes, Chair George, I believe so. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next slide.
Corianne, that was great on the tribal thing. One other question. I see some private schools that have their own. Bus fleets. One of one in particular comes into this neighborhood to pick up kids to take to a high school over on the west side. Would they? Since you're using refuse haulers that are private people but providing a public service. Would would a private or a charter kind of school be would qualify if they ran a bus fleet?
Commissioner Mosby, actually, that that's a good question. I'd have to double check with you on that. We did set it up so that we know a lot of school districts hire out, you know, a third party to actually provide bus services like a first student or, you know, that those kinds of companies. And we definitely intended to include those into this program. I'd I'd have to double check with you if that same applies to a private school or not.
Good, thank you.
Okay, next slide. Okay, so to illustrate how this provision would work. I'm presenting here an example using the Newburgh School District who just recently received a grant from Portland General Electric for its first school bus, electric school bus. And it's also going to be used to pilot the state's first bus to grid demonstration project. To be able to serve as a storage. Dusel, you know, and then to like go back and forth from the bus to the grid. This is especially important for resiliency work and emergency response situations and. It's exciting that we're going to have this project. So the grant program that PGE runs in this case is funded by clean fuels credits. That are generated on behalf by PG on behalf of their residential EV only customers. And Newburgh is one of four school districts to be awarded electric school buses. Along with Beaverton, Salem, Kaiser and Reynolds School Districts. A companion Pacific Court grant will also be funding an electric school bus for the Ben Lapine District. And PG and Pacific Court partnered on a project to fund. An electric school bus for the Portland Public Schools because of the routes and where the charging is actually overlaps both of the utilities. So it's exciting to see these new. School buses in the state for the very, very first time. So so in this example, the Newburgh School District wants to buy more electric buses, right? And we're presuming that they will like these buses and they want more. And so it. And so it wants to apply for this new advanced crediting provision to help bring down the associated costs of doing so. And so DEQ will work with the school district to estimate the number of miles that the school bus will drive and the amount of electricity that it'll take to, to be used to be able to charge that electric bus. And so what this table contains then is six years' worth of credit generation, assuming that this school bus drives 15,000 miles per year and that it takes approximately 27,900 kilowatt-hours of electricity to charge. And again, if those credits were sold at the market value of $125 at this time, that would create an approximately $25,000 of additional revenue that could be generated at the beginning of when that school bus was placed into, you know, its service, rather than waiting for the entire six years to actually generate those credits. Next slide. So in and of itself, you know, the $25,000 might not seem, you know, might seem like a really relatively small part of bringing the cost of the next electric school bus down. But when it is paired with other funding opportunities, you know, it starts moving the needle to make those decisions. So electric school buses are expensive. This is a classic, a typical Class A school bus, and it costs approximately $400,000. So the way that the funding works for these school buses is that the Department of Education covers the first 70% of the cost through a tax depreciation over a 10-year period. So if the Department of Education is covering the 70%, what remains is approximately $120,000 of that original $400,000 bus. So as you know, DEQ implements several grant programs that can also be used to help bring down the cost of converting from a diesel to get into a new electric bus. So what this green line represents, it shows a case where, you know, the school district is awarded either, you know, a grant such as a Volkswagen grant or a federal Dura grant, you know, and using the percentages that are allowed through those programs will provide an estimate of either $100,000 to $120,000 of additional funds. And then that covers nearly the entire cost of the school bus at this point. You know, you'll generate the advanced credits from Clean Fuels and it could either like fill that gap up to the total cost of the bus or it could also be used to offset the costs of other things like the charger that is going to be used, needed to support this school bus. But it's not, you know, the, the grants are not necessarily available to all of the participants of this program. So what the blue line indicates then is a case where the, you know, the diesel grant might not be available. But in this case, the advanced CFP credits brings down this funding gap to under $95,000, which could then be funded through other kinds of funds. For example, you know, the incremental credits that we just, you know, covered, you know, the retirement of the REXs to generate more incremental credits and then the revenue that results in that. Or it could be stacked with maybe another utility grant. Or it could be stacked with other kind of efforts that the Department of Energy is working with school districts on, you know, to provide this funding. So, you know, what this really is trying to show is that how this is a really good example of how, you know, multiple partners, DEQ, Department of Education, the utilities, the school districts, you know, all can work together to stack these funding opportunities, you know, in an effort to bring more emissions-free buses to more of Oregon's schools.
Corianne, a quick question on that. So I certainly appreciate the example. One of the things I'm wondering though is, is for maybe small rural school districts that, you know, don't have much staff, don't have much resources, how are they supposed to figure out all the different grant programs that they would have to apply to and be able to do that, to come up with a package that could potentially work for them? You know, even if, if, if that would work, you know, living out here where, where I do, there's, I don't think there's anybody sitting around thinking about, you know, how could they could creatively finance the next school bus? If they need a school bus, they're just working hard to, to just go and buy it and get it. So is, is there some sort of way that people are really helping lay this out and make it easy for, for school districts or other entities that probably don't have transportation coordinators or something like that?
Yes, Chair George, absolutely. So, you know, I think that a lot of the state agencies, we recognize that school districts, you know, do need a lot of help, but this is a place where we would want to encourage the electrification. There's two efforts specifically that I'm familiar with. One of, one of them is working with other state agencies to actually, we're developing a school bus toolkit. And so what this effort is between Department of Education, Department of Transportation, creating, you know, a toolkit, so its materials as well as like the calculator, Excel spreadsheet type thing that examines all the different costs and all the different benefits and all the different kind of things that you have to consider as you decide whether you want to invest in an electric school bus as well. And then additionally, in the Every Mile Counts effort, there is an alternative fuels study and we'll, we'll be looking at specific use cases of different fleets in the state. School buses will be one of them. So again, you know, specific targeted outreach and working with the Department of Education to reach all the different school districts and provide the resources and the technical systems to be able to at least, at least make that first connection and that first step to get school districts to begin thinking about it.
Thanks, everyone.
And I've, and I'll also add too that the utilities, because, I mean, it is a high priority for them to do that and have put together a lot of really good resources as they interact with their customers as well.
Commissioner Mosby.
Yeah, Chair George. Hey, Corianne, you've got me convinced. I'm an electric bus proponent here now, but my question is, this bus, this Class A bus is $400,000. What is a similar diesel or fossil fuel bus go for? And then I also, I would think that especially in a larger school district where they've got a, you know, a regular motor pool, the maintenance costs, I would think on the electric bus would be lower than a fossil fuel-powered bus. And so that would factor in, but so can we compare apples to oranges here and, and see what the, the gas or the diesel-fired bus is?
Yes, Commissioner Mosby. So that's exactly kind of what the school bus toolkit is for. I'm, I'm going to take a stab at a diesel bus approximately, probably more in the, you know, hundred to hundred $50,000 range kind of a thing. So it is a significant upgrade to get to that electric bus. You are right that the operations are less for an electric as opposed to a diesel and the price of the fuel, right? The cost of the fuel is much less. You know, I know the first of the school buses, electric school buses have been delivered to the Beaverton School District. And they have a really cool video on YouTube. But that are the kinds of things that they're touting, the lower cost, the lower maintenance, and actually the lower noise levels that actually make it better for the kids and for the school, for the bus drivers in the electric school buses.
So with all these grants and programs and keeping in mind, I would guess a bus would, if it's maintained properly, should last 15 years anyway, would be my guess. If, if you penciled it out, are we, are we sort of at a push or just a slight increase in price over the life of that bus, do you think?
Commissioner Mosby, I mean, over the life of the bus, I think we estimated like in a 12-year period, I think is, is, is what we do. And total cost is actually lower in the electricity, electric cost over that full-time frame.
Great, thank you.
Kathleen.
Oh, sorry about that. Commissioner Kyle.
That's okay. And I don't want to get too sidetracked with different examples here, but Corianne, I'm curious about, because part of this rule is bringing other equipment into the, the rule, the construction equipment and also inshore port equipment. Both places that, both sources which create micro pollution issues that have been challenging to address and control. Are there examples of these types of, you know, stacking grant opportunities to also help facilitate the conversion of construction equipment that will now be eligible under the rule as well as port equipment, the forecliffs and the, the contracting equipment in the same way, you know, everybody can get behind a school bus? But is there a way to, is there other programs that are also in place and guidance to help those other other industries, for lack of a better word, adopt this kind of advanced purchasing as well?
Yeah, sure, Commissioner Kyle, absolutely. So, I mean, I do want to make it clear with the rules that we're doing now. This is limited to public entities and then people, companies that contract with those public entities. We did so primarily because, you know, this is a new provision. This is a very manual process for us and I think it's going to take a lot of effort on our part to work with these applicants to do this. And also we were mindful that if we had too many of these projects, we don't want to flood the market with more, more, more credits, right? I mean, there is a point where a large influx of new credits could impact the overall market. So those are the kinds of things that we considered in doing this. But inasmuch as a port is a public entity and there are contracting that goes on, say for example, in the Portland Tri-county area with some of the diesel efforts that they are working on in construction projects and whatnot, that we do think that this would be an opportunity. I, I guess I'll also add to that there was a lot of interest here from private entities, right? People that are putting up, say, Bash chargers for public charging, what kind of thing, to want to have access to the advanced crediting too. But we decided to not up, up to do that at this time to basically really get our feet wet with, you know, what it's going to take for the agency to do this and what the uptake is on the public entity side of the fleet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I don't think so. I think we've got our questions to you so far.
Okay, so next slide, Stephanie. So actually, that is the end of the presentation that I have for you today. I'd just like to conclude by saying that I really appreciated the involvement of everybody that was involved in this process. You know, as we referred to earlier, it was a really quick turnaround and we took a lot, and it took a lot of hard work to get to where we are today. And I truly believe that the proposals contained in this rulemaking, if adopted, will move the needle in Oregon's effort to advance transportation electrification efforts. If there's no other additional questions, then I want to thank you for your time today. And at this point, for the DEQ recommends that the Environmental Quality Commission adopt the proposed new rules and rule amendments in Attachment A as part of Chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules.
Thank you very much for that really informative presentation. So Commissioners, do you have any further questions or comments before we entertain a motion? No, hearing, yes, Commissioner Mosby.
Just before I introduce a motion, I'd just like to say I, I thought that was a really good presentation. I'm excited about some of these electric vehicles. Hopefully, the next step will be able to move it beyond the public sector into the private sector because I think there is a, a huge need there. So unless there's no other comments, I would make a motion that the Environmental Quality Commission adopt the proposed new rules and rule amendments in Attachment A as part of Chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
I echo Wade's comments and I second this.
Excellent. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. This is exciting work.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, well, as, as Richard kind of gave us the preview, we have a lot of, you know, kind of related and complementary efforts that we're going to be hearing about today. And so we get to move on to an informational session about the work going on with the greenhouse gas programs. And I think we have three presenters, Colin, Michael, and Nicole. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, again. For the record, Colin McConaughey, manager of the Office of Greenhouse Gas Programs. And yes, we have a, I think, an interesting update to provide for the commission this morning on what we're now calling our Climate Protection Program. This was an effort we had previously referred to and as our, a cap, or a program to cap and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And we're now using a, a more of a, a programmatic name that, that again, we're, we're using Climate Protection Program as that, as that name. And I'll briefly introduce this program before I hand it over to Nicole to walk through for the commission, both the process to date, the process we plan going forward, leading up to what, what we hope will be proposed rules to the commission to conserve for adoption to implement this program. Can we go to the next slide, please? Great. So this program, again, that we're referring to as our, as Oregon's Climate Protection Program is centered first and foremost on establishing a limit on greenhouse gas emissions that the commission would allow from the use of, primarily from fossil fuels in Oregon. Fossil fuels are, by some considerable margin, the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon. And honestly, that really holds true for, for pretty much any first-world economy currently. Fossil fuel emissions come from, first and foremost, gasoline and diesel used for transportation, as well as diesel used in other applications such as construction equipment or backup generators, boilers, as well as natural gas, which is used primarily for space and water heating for our homes and businesses, as well as a variety of other industrial applications. So limits from Oregonians' use of fossil fuels would provide a significant new method for curtailing our state's contribution to climate change and advancing our progress toward emission reductions that science says are needed globally to avert the worst effects of climate change. I want to also highlight a couple of fundamental points about our approach to proposing this program and specifically on the nature of the limits that this program could impose on greenhouse gases. First, these limits would be enforceable. That, these aren't aspirational targets or goals, but rather limits that would require regulated parties chiefly fossil fuel suppliers to comply with those limits. Nicole will explain further how we think this program could enforce broad limits across a widespread sector or sectors of emissions. But I want to emphasize the key difference for this effort from the various goals or targets that have been established and considered and really debated in Oregon. And secondly, this program would, could establish those limits to gradually and steadily decline over time, lowering this limit so that the program forces overall progress toward a mission, limits that the commission could establish and rule. So I suspect this brief intro may raise some questions and I know Nicole's presentation will answer many of those. So Nicole, I'm going to hand it over to you to provide more information on the, the process that we've had to date to develop this program and the process we plan going forward.
Thanks, Colin.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair George and Commissioners. I'm, I'm excited to talk to you today about the Climate Protection Program. I should introduce myself for the record. I am Nicole Singh, the Senior Climate Policy Advisor here at the Office of GHG Programs. I'm going to just ask for next slide. So to briefly recap, DEQ is using a three-phase approach to develop the Climate Protection Program. The intent of this approach all along was to allow for extensive public engagement, including active engagement with environmental justice and impacted communities. First, we had an initial assessment which kicked off about a year ago. The second phase, which we have referred to as the scoping phase, again, really was a period of intensive stakeholder and public engagement in advance of the formal rulemaking process, which we are in now. In the scoping phase, DEQ had a series of technical workshops which focused on key design issues, but also key considerations, again, such as considerations for impacted communities. We also held a series of town halls, which really mainly was an effort to try to the best of our abilities to get in front of the public and to let people be more aware of this rulemaking and basically just to be more aware of what the Climate Protection Program was trying to achieve. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So one of the, the key outcomes of the scoping phase was really the evolution and the identification of the program goals. You know, what is it that the Climate Protection Program should be doing? And, you know, of course, the program is at its core about reducing and achieving significant emission reductions. But one of the other goals that we developed in that process was understanding that that needs to be coupled with emission reductions that will also contain costs to businesses and consumers. And we also need to find ways to promote benefits and alleviate burdens for environmental justice and impacted communities. So really, the three goals of emissions, equity, and cost. Um, so when we are considering how to design the program, you know, this is the lens through which we are trying to make these evaluations. And it really is how we are framing our discussions with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Um, we do continue to discuss these goals. I, it's a very active conversation with our advisory committee. You know, here at D E Q, we don't believe these goals are mutually exclusive or zero sum. But of course, there is always discussion and comments that in pursuing one goal, we may not be adequately addressing another goal. Also, we're, we're well aware of the fact that some of these design elements that we'll be talking about today may just be better suited to address one goal more than another. So again, as we're trying to develop this program with public engagement and with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee, we are trying to develop a program that can balance and maximize these goals. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we are currently meeting with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. We plan to meet with the committee through July. Um, our next steps then would be to release a proposed rule and open a public comment period um in late summer and early fall. Um, we would then hopefully plan to submit a proposed rule to you, our commission, in November um for your deliberation at the end of the year in December for a twenty twenty-two start for the program. Next slide, please. So our Rulemaking Advisory Committee, um, which, of course, the commission approved last year, has met three times already. Uh, we have four more meetings scheduled, so we're just coming up to our halfway point. Um, we, of course, have a very large and diverse Rulemaking Advisory Committee, which has been critical for us as we are developing this rule. Uh, we are very fortunate that we have environmental justice and community-based organizations on our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Um, we just had our last, our last meeting last week. It seems already a long time ago, but I think it was about a week ago. Um, and I do want to emphasize that, um, we have a very engaged and committed Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Um, we, in, in a Zoom world, we have something like six, seven hour-long meetings with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Um, they are pouring through materials and looking through agendas, preparing for discussion questions. Uh, we come to the meetings, there's lots of engagement. They, very quickly after those meetings, where they get a lot of new information, provide us with additional comments and discussions. And probably before they know it, we're, it's time for another meeting. Um, so we've been, we've been very fortunate that we have such a committed group of, of organizations on our rack. Um, the rack meetings are also open to the public, and they are opportunities for public comment. Um, I think at our last two rack meetings, we had two public comment sessions. And we, again, have had very active engagement from the public. I, we are averaging something about like over a hundred and fifty attendees for each meeting. Next slide, please, Stephanie. So as I discussed, you know, one of our main goals in, in thinking through how we should design this program is centering equity and pursuing equitable outcomes. Um, we know that for environmental justice communities, um, there's a long history of neglect when it comes to addressing environmental pollution and health impacts. On top of that, climate change impacts are expected to disproportionately impact communities of colors and low-income communities. Uh, we also know that many of these communities have historically been marginalized and excluded from decision-making processes. Um, our environmental justice and impacted communities also are those who tend to have less access to new clean technology. There's lots of systemic barriers in place that prohibit equitable energy trans- transitions. So of course, this program can't address all those barriers, but in, but in designing this program, we're going to look for every opportunity that we can to, to build in elements that will promote an equitable transition. A further consideration we do have is, as we regulate emissions under this program, we know that this could result in cost increases for everyday consumers and users of these fuels. And so top of mind for us, again, is that we do know that low-income households and environmental justice communities do spend a larger portion of their budget on energy costs. So again, we have to be mindful that this could lead to disproportionate cost impacts. So what are some of the ways in which we could center or consider equity and equitable outcomes? Um, and a lot of this, again, I want to say is, is really due to our environmental justice and community-based organizations, not just spending time at the Rulemaking Advisory Committee meetings, but also spending time with us here at D E Q and helping us think through ways, both from a, a program design and implementation, but also from a process standpoint, how we can, how we can center equitable outcomes. Um, so some things to keep in mind is that as we reduce G H G emissions, we also reduce co-pollutants from fuels like diesel, um, et cetera, which, of course, you would mean that we would have better health benefits. And this, again, is um critical to lots of our environmental justice communities, because they do tend to be located around these kind of busy transportation corridors. Again, we're trying to think through ways in which we could potentially mitigate any kinds of disproportionate cost. And this might require us being creative and thinking um how other elements of the program could benefit um environmental justice and impacted communities. And as I said, too, there's also just promoting processes and allowing for meaningful engagement. And again, we are looking um to our, to our rack colleagues and our environmental justice and community-based organizations to help us figure out ways in which we can build in um these kind of equitable approaches throughout the process and throughout the program's implementation. Um, next slide, please. And I'll just skip this one. Next slide, thanks. So we're going to turn a little bit to talking about, as, as Colin said, how the Climate Protection Program could work in practice. Um, you know, there are lots of different programs out there which talk about limiting or reducing emissions. And, you know, I will be clear, we are learning from a lot of those programs. But again, we're also trying to think through a program that's going to work specifically for Oregon, for its businesses and for its communities. And so we do think taking a moment to kind of understand how, how the program could work in practices is, could be helpful. Um, so it, you know, how do these programs that essentially use emission limits, or what's sometimes referred to as caps, work? And as Colin said, what's, what's important is that we do assign a total emissions limit for regulated entities. What's maybe different is we don't actually dictate or prescribe how individual entities achieve reductions. Um, the idea behind this is that this could create cost and savings. It could also encourage innovation in achieving significant emission reductions. Um, but the emissions limit does send a clear signal to entities and to businesses that pursuing alternatives is essentially worth the upfront investment and effort. And it really has been shown that these kinds of long-term signals, these long-term fixed goals really do play an important role in pushing forward emission reductions. Next slide, please. So very, at a, at a very high level, and you're going to hear me say this a lot in the next couple of slides, at a very high level, at a very simplistic level, or here's an illustrative example. But um, at a high level, the Climate Protection Program could establish an overall limit or an emissions cap that would steadily decline towards a long-term target. So D E Q would essentially distribute what we call compliance instruments. And the number of compliance instruments we distribute would be equal to the emissions limit each year. That's because one compliance instrument is equal to one metric ton of emissions each year. So in our case, D E Q would be giving these compliance instruments directly to regulated entities. So just to give a little bit of more context, let's just say in a fictional example, in the first year of the program, the emissions limit is thirty million tons. And the second year, the emissions limit is twenty-five million tons. Um, in the first year, E, D E Q would issue the thirty million ton, um, excuse me, would issue thirty million instruments to regulated entities. And then the second year, we would then distribute twenty-five million instruments. Next slide, please. So we're going to take it just a little bit of a closer look at how regulated entities might actually comply with the program. You know, at a regulated entities level, how would this work for them? And so again, we do have another fictional example. Um, in our fictional example here, D E Q has established a limit of forty tons per year. So we would be therefore distributing forty compliance instruments. And in this scenario, we have four regulated entities. Um, for simplicity's sake, we're going to say we distribute ten instruments to each entity. In reality, we still have to determine how compliance instruments are going to be allocated among regulated entities. This is actually one of our tough issues for us to tackle. But again, for simplicity's sake, we're just going to say that we've distributed all the compliance instruments equally. Um, in, each of these entities had emissions of twelve tons in the previous year. So they're all going to receive ten compliance instruments. So they all have to figure out how they're going to get from twelve tons to ten tons. Next slide, please. So we have one entity, a natural gas utility, that reduces emissions by using more renewable natural gas. It goes from twelve tons to ten tons. It's all set. Uh, we have another entity, entity B, which is a fuel supplier, a transportation fuel supplier, that reduces its emissions by increasing its mix of biofuels. This entity is actually able to reduce its emissions ahead of schedule. It's actually able to do better. So instead of going from just twelve tons to ten tons, they're actually able to go from twelve tons to nine tons. So what that really means is they have an extra compliance instrument, because again, we gave them ten, but they were actually able to do better than that. So they have one extra compliance instrument. So they have a couple of options potentially, to, you know, depending on what, how we designed the program. Um, they could choose to hold on to that compliance instrument, what we call banking, and use it in the future, or they could use to sell it or trade it. So now if we go down to our entity B, which I believe is another natural gas utility, they're also able to reduce their emissions, but they're not able to reduce their emissions all the way down to ten, ten tons. So they move down from twelve tons, but they don't get to ten tons. So what this entity actually decides to do is to buy the compliance instrument from entity B, the fuel supplier. So those two entities have basically traded that extra compliance instrument. And then finally, this does take us to entity C, and we'll talk a lot, a lot more about what we're proposing for entity C. But again, for entity C, this is another transportation fuel supplier who is able, again, to make reductions, but not enough reductions to get them down to ten tons. And so in this case, what they would do instead potentially is we would give them the option to essentially invest in community projects that also reduce emissions, and they would receive a credit in exchange for that investment. We're currently calling this community climate investment credits, because we love the letter C, but we'll, I'll provide a little bit more detail about the community climate investments and how we think those could work later on in the presentation. I'm going to ask for the next slide. So one of the advantages of this type of framework that we're thinking of for the Climate Protection Program is that we can leverage the multiple federal, local, and state programs that are already reducing emissions. And, you know, as Colin said, you know, this is critical, because as we know, fossil fuels are used throughout the economy. It's used in our cars, in our homes, in our businesses, um, in our offices. And so it will, it does take a lot of these programs working together to achieve these kinds of decarbonization of the, of the economy. Next slide, please. So we just heard from Corey about Clean Fuels Program and a lot of the electric vehicle initiatives. We're also going to be hearing about every mile counts, or the commission's going to be hearing. And so again, all of these programs are already helping to reduce the carbon intensity of transportation fuels. And they're also helping to reduce the use of gasoline and diesel, all of which then in turn reduces transportation sector emissions. So these programs that are already in place, that are playing a huge role, are really going to help entities comply with the Climate Protection Program's limits on emissions. But the Climate Protection Program's emission limits in turn are going to drive further emission reductions, and they're going to lock in those emissions reductions. Um, another example would be S V ninety-eight, which is helping to incentivize renewable natural gas. That, of course, also helps drive down emissions for natural gas. But the limit that the Climate Protection Program would be placing on those emissions would also help to further incentivize reductions and, again, lock down these emission reductions. Um, next slide, please. So I'm going to shift away a little bit from the program framework. I know there might be questions now, um, which I'm happy to take now, but I could also then keep going and talk a little bit more about some of the program's key design decisions.
Yes, let's go ahead and keep going.
All right, great. Thank you, Chair George. So one topic which has generated um considerable advisory committee discussion and public comment has been addressing emissions associated with Oregon's electricity sector. Um, as you just heard from Corey, you know, D E Q recognizes that electricity plays an important role in emissions. Um, we just heard that, of course, the electricity sector is critical. Um, and decarbonizing electricity sector is critical to transitioning to low-carbon future. Um, so with the Climate Protection Program, D E Q is focused on setting emission limits on fossil fuels, including gasoline and diesel, um, and all natural gas, but except for the gas that's used in our in-state power plants. So, you know, essentially, why is D E Q proposing this approach? And there's a couple of, a few key reasons for why we are proposing this. You know, probably at the top of this is while there is significant emission reductions, I'm going to ask for the next slide, actually. Thank you. So while there is significant emission reductions associated with the generation of electricity within the state, you know, most fossil fuel emissions associated with the use of electricity in Oregon are generated outside of the state. So essentially, power plants outside of the state are combusting fossil fuels or electricity being used in Oregon. Um, as you can see in the, in the slide, about three-fourths of the emissions associated with electricity use are these types of emissions. So our understanding here at D E Q is that the commission does not have the clear authority to regulate these emissions that physically occur outside of the state. And so this does then pose a significant leakage risk, which, you know, very, very briefly just means you're moving emissions around. You're not actually reducing emissions overall, and you could potentially be having negative economic impacts. And then turning back to our in-state generation, again, our understanding is that the commission may not have clear authority to regulate emissions from energy facilities with a site certificate issued by the Energy Facility Siding Council. So, and as we heard from Corey, you know, the electricity sector is getting cleaner. So additionally, there are multiple initiatives underway to further reduce emissions from the electricity sector. So due to this kind of unique combination of circumstances and due to the limited authority for the E Q C, um, D E Q does believe that the Climate Protection Program really isn't a good fit for addressing electricity sector emissions for Oregon. Um, next slide, please.
So Nicole, before we move on, could we go back to the last slide?
Sure, go ahead. Thank you.
I appreciate you, um, you know, addressing this very directly, because we know that there's been a lot of attention, you know, on this issue and a lot of concern. Uh, and I really appreciate you, you sharing. The graphic just simply helps us understand how, you know, how much of that out-of-state generation um is part of that electric, electricity use um puzzle here in Oregon. Um, and I appreciate the point you make about leakage, which is if, you know, even if we could, and I understood your questions about that, but even if we could um approach this in-state generation facilities, that that might just drive uh folks to, to those out-of-state market components and further increase the out-of-state. So I don't know if you or, or Director Whitman have any interest in kind of talking about, how is it that we um continue to work with our in-state generators to, to advance these goals? We've heard a little bit of discussion of that, but I know that there's a lot of focus and a lot of attention on this. So I think it's worth us just pausing to take a minute and talk about how it is that we keep providing the right sorts of incentives for our uh in-state providers.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George. I will take this opportunity to talk a little bit about that. And I, I want to start by briefly repeating the point that Nicole made, that we agree that getting to uh clean electricity is a key part of decarbonizing Oregon's economy. Um, we have to take on this issue. The, the question is how? And um, the Oregon Legislature is addressing this issue very directly right now in proposed legislation for, to achieve what's called a hundred percent clean. This is similar to legislative efforts that have been undertaken in other states around the nation. But House, specifically House Bill twenty-twenty-one uh is the current vehicle that is um the leading candidate to address this issue in the current session of the Oregon Legislature. And basically, that, the legislation would um create a framework for Oregon's utilities to move to a hundred percent clean electricity over a period of time. The next public hearing on House Bill twenty-twenty-one is next week on Wednesday, March thirty-one, from one to three in the afternoon. And uh, again, we'd encourage folks who really want uh Oregon to make progress in this arena to um really direct their attention to the Oregon Legislature and the legislative effort on this, because we think in terms of the how to get to this goal that we agree with, it really is going to require legislation. That uh legislation would be very complementary uh to the Climate Protection Program that we're putting together here. As you heard this morning from Cori Ann, uh, you know, trying to shift um our, our greenhouse gas emissions that are occurring in the transportation sector to electricity. To electricity, um, it, it is critical that that electricity be clean in order for this, uh, um, effort. To succeed, so the, the two approaches are totally complementary. And having, uh, legislation passed by the Oregon, um. House and Senate on this subject would be very timely in terms of our, our work here. Uh, so I think I'll close there, and, um, that just gives you a quick hit, I could. Go into more detail, but I think in the interest of time, I'll stop there. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, I appreciate you, you, uh, sharing that with us. And just to make sure, um, that I've got it right and that others do too, this, uh, current one-hundred percent legislative effort of HB twenty-twenty-one. You said that there's a hearing next week on the thirty-first, and what was the time of that?
That's right, it's, uh, from one to three PM. Uh, next Wednesday, and I believe that is in the House Energy and Environment Committee.
Okay, so folks who are particularly interested in this issue should just be aware of that effort as well, and how that would help. Alright, well, thank you, I know we, we do need to keep moving, but I want, it was worth taking a few minutes, because we know that this is. Is something that folks are particularly interested in, so I'm gonna turn it back to you, Nicole.
Thank you Chair George. So on this slide, we do have, um, in front of us, a couple of other key program design elements. Really, our intent here today is to not go through all of the key program design elements, as I said, six, seven-hour rulemaking advisory committee meetings. But we did wanna start giving, um, the commission a sense of some of the key topics. That we are working on with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. And obviously, as we report back to you and as we develop the proposed rule, you'll start to see more and more, um, specifics on each of these key design elements. But a couple, the three that you see here are some that we have spent a great deal of time. Talking with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee with, and we actually, the, the last one here, the Community Climate. Investments is something we were just talking about for the first time with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Last week, so that's, that's hot off the presses. Um, so again, when we're thinking about these program design elements, we are thinking about them through the lens of those three program goals. Um, again, we are gonna be, just be touching upon a couple of these pre, um, these elements. But you know, all of these features are interconnected. So you know, it can be challenging to discuss these elements in isolation from each other. And I, I do know that that sometimes can be frustrating for even our advisory committee and the public. But again, as we kind of move forward through this process and we start to, to put the pieces together. And as we work towards our, uh, proposals in a draft, we'll, we'll have a clearer picture of how all these elements work together. Um, so, uh, next slide. So we're gonna start at the top, which, as I said, at the core of the program is emissions reduction, so really, we've been spending a lot of time talking about targets, the emission limits for the program. Um, we have heard a lot of strong preference for using mass case caps. Which essentially are caps that have a numerical limit, which is basically how I've been referring to the, the framework from the very beginning. Um, there are other programs that sometimes use things called intensity-based standards. Which are an emission limit per unit or. Generation or production, but really, what we, what we've heard strong support for and what we're hearing with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee is a mass-based cap limit. Um, our preliminary discussions have focused on reducing emissions by at least eighty percent by twenty-fifty. Um, the emissions limit would then decline, you know, each year to ensure early and continuing steady reductions. We've had lots of discussion around interim targets, so those interim targets would be. Things that allow us to further define our early annual decline in limits. And that's something we will continue to talk about with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Um, next slide, please. So achieving at least eighty percent reductions by twenty-fifty, that's gonna require using a lot of different technologies, approaches, and tools. Um, so a whole group of program design elements, which we call cost containment elements, they're sometimes referred to compliance flexibility mechanisms. That really has been a focus of our conversations with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. And really, what we're trying to do is think creatively about how these mechanisms could be designed and incorporated in the program in a way that balances our three program goals. Um. We are trying to find a way to design these cost containment measures that could support the emissions reductions, could lower potential costs associated with the program. Um, but also support equitable outcomes while driving investments with Oregon. And again, this is, these conversations about the cost containment measures, this is really where having a diverse rulemaking advisory committee has been so critical. Because it really has brought, uh, a lot of issues to our attention, which we may not have been aware of at the beginning of this process. Um, we really are also trying to think through ways in which some of these cost containment measures and compliance flexibility options. Could specifically direct benefits to environmental justice and impacted communities. Um, again, as I talked about with co-pollutants, that's one powerful way in which we can potentially direct benefits to environmental justice and impacted communities. Um, but we are aware that flexibility, um, also means that the pace of reductions. Could be different from one regulated entity to another, and so that's just something that we have to be mindful of when we're deciding the program. Um, without some cost containment measures, you know, we do, we are concerned that the cost of complying with the program could be high. And again, that could increase energy and fuel costs for everyday users and consumers, and that's also a risk to businesses. Next slide, please. So I'm just gonna briefly touch upon some of the cost containment measures, compliance flexibility measure, measures that we've discussed. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, in our earlier example, we, we have been discussing allowing entities to bank or to trade compliance instruments. So in our earlier example, we had that one, um, entity that was able to essentially reduce its emissions earlier. And so that they had the opportunity to bank and use in the future, or they could trade with another regulated entity. So we do continue to discuss with the Advisory Committee whether there should be things perhaps like expiration dates for banked instruments. Or if trading should be limited for some of the regulated sectors. Uh, another thing that we, we would have to do in the program is establish what we call compliance periods. So that is the framework during which an entity must track emissions, and at the end. They would basically present compliance instruments equal to their regulated emissions. So DEQ staff has discussed three-year compliance periods with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Um, some of the benefits of a three-year approach is it gives regulated entities more time to adjust to the emission reductions. Um, also, it might help with variability from one year to the next. But, uh, but the, the key takeaway is, at the end of that same three-year period, they still have to have met the same emission reductions target. As they would have had to met for each of the individual years. Next slide, please. And so as I touched upon earlier, DEQ is exploring a mechanism that could offer an additional way for regulated entities to reduce emissions and comply with the program. And, uh, in our, in discussing this with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee, we are really trying to find a way to make this. Design element something that could drive investments and benefits in the communities in Oregon. So essentially, how this, um, community climate change investments would work is. Regulated entities could potentially receive credits for investments in community projects that reduce emissions. Uh, so front of mind for us when we're thinking of designing this potential mechanism, like I said, was to support investments and benefits in Oregon's communities. But in particular, we do wanna focus on our environmental justice communities and our other impacted communities. For all the reasons that we discussed earlier, but also in some other programs which have used these types of design elements. You know, there've been situations where communities have not necessarily received the benefits. And so in learning from other programs that exist across the US, that's, that's something that we wanna try to make sure we proactively address as we're designing this. This alternative way to reduce emissions. We want to try as much as possible to ensure that these benefits would accrue all across communities in Oregon. So just for a little bit more specifics on how this works, we go back to our transportation fuel supplier. Um, our transportation fuel supplier is the short, the one compliance instrument. Um, now they do have an option to invest in a supplemental project that reduces emissions in communities, so. They are, we are still reducing greenhouse gas emissions, it's just being done someplace else in the economy. And it's being in, done in our case, in a community in Oregon. Um, the entity would basically contribute or pay a set dollar amount to what we think could be a third-party entity. And in exchange, they would receive one credit in return. Um, this credit is similar to a compliance instrument that it represents one ton of allowable emissions reductions. So just again, to recap, for this transportation fuel supplier. They were able to reduce their emissions by one ton themselves, they move from twelve tons to eleven tons. They invest in a project in a community that reduces emissions, and then they receive one credit in exchange for that, which allows them to get from twelve tons to ten tons under the program. So we're, we're really just starting to talk about this with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee, we've had wonderful, um, support on trying to think through. You know, issues and potential pitfalls with this approach, again, with our environmental justice, um, and community-based organizations. And so this is, this is a work in progress, it's something we'll, you'll probably continue to hear about from us, and we'll continue to talk about with our Rulemaking Advisory Committee. Uh, but what we think, how we think this could work is that there could be one or more third parties. Who could both receive the funds and then invest the funds in these emission reduction projects. Um, DEQ would have to think through developing a certification or some kind of selection process for the third party. And we'd have to think through how to establish eligibility criteria. Again, we could imagine that this third party would regularly report, I should say, next slide, I'm sorry. Yeah, this could regularly report back to DEQ on how to track, um, investments have been spent. You know, what kinds of emissions and pollution reductions these projects are generating. And also kind of gives information on the types of projects and how the projects are distributed across the state and. You know, any other type of metrics that we might think is helpful. Next slide, please.
Um, Commissioner Kyle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you. I just, I kind of, uh, I appreciate how this is going and, uh, the effort to try to put some resources into the communities that need it. Uh, to be able to adopt local solutions. My question kind of echoes actually what Kathleen mentioned with the cleaner fuels, which is. Uh, the simplicity of communities to implement and access these types of funds and, and. Kind of the wraparound products that a community would need to know in order to even begin to access those resources. Is that coming up in the Rules Committee when you're talking about, you know, like how to actually get not just the resources. But also, uh, the capacity within the communities in order to be able to access the resources, so make it more. A bidirectional, is that coming up in the, is those, are those conversations? Uh, the discussion of the toolkit that communities would need, uh, are those coming up in the rules, uh, discussions?
Yes, thank you Commissioner, and, and those are exactly a lot of the questions that, and discussions that have come up. Not just with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee, but again, our environmental justice and our community-based organizations, right from the get-go, had mentioned that. We have to think about, if we, if we go forward with this approach, that we have to develop processes where we're doing the outreach. Because we know that there will be gaps, you know, some communities, if we, if we leave it up to let people come to us. There will definitely be cases where there's not enough, uh, uh, resources available to support that type of participation, so we do have to think through. What kind of processes we could implement so that communities could actively participate in the process of figuring out which projects would work for their communities. And partly, we might be doing something similar to, as Corey and discussed, like some kind of advisory committee. So that we could have an advisory committee be part of the process and helping us to identify projects. But very much, we've heard, we have to take the extra step of identifying gaps. Because of course, we want these projects to, uh, work all across the state. And so if we, if we, we could default only having some communities having the ability to participate, so we actually have to actively identify gaps in representation. And we'll actually have to actively play a role in making sure that there is adequate representation for the communities across the state, so. That, that has definitely been a, a constant, um. A constant, um, point that Rulemaking Advisory Committee members and, uh, especially our environmental justice and community-based organizations have emphasized.
Okay, thank you. I know we're a little bit behind time, but we will just keep moving, um, and, uh, and. Get ready to hear the, the next portion of the presentation here.
Yeah, thank you Chair George, I'll move through the next slides a little bit quicker. So we do, um, as I said, you know, in thinking through how this could work. Uh, we, uh, we wanna prioritize projects in environmental justice and impacted communities. Um, the type of projects that we've heard there's a lot of interest in, similar to what Corianne was talking about, is. Projects that really could expand public transit operations and availability, you know, heat pumps for. For water heating, energy efficiency initiatives, electrifying school and transit buses, or converting local delivery fleets to non-fossil fuels. So again, these projects would be projects that are coming from the communities themselves. They do have to reduce emissions, but as you can see, um, lots of times, these, these do tend to be the projects, as we just heard, that can be more cost-intensive. And if we can find ways in which this program can help build upon, again, the other types of funds that are being used to, to transition the economy. We think that could be really, uh, hopefully, potentially a useful tool of the climate protection program. Um, and as, as I, we just heard from the Commissioner, we would have to be very mindful of how we can ensure that. Uh, communities across Oregon are able to participate in this process and to make sure that there, there's adequate representation so that. Uh, these types of investments would actually need, uh, the. Meet the needs of communities across Oregon, but also just meet the diverse needs, because as we know, every community is different. Um, so with that, I'm actually gonna say, um, I, I can probably stop talking here, I know in the staff report. And there's a couple of other slides on the modeling analysis, and I'm, I'm happy to take questions on the modeling analysis. But I'll probably just stop there, Chair George, and see, um, if there's specific questions, you know, again, we're gonna be continuing to talk about the climate protection program. Um, so the feedback and questions we've been getting here today is really helpful in us as we're going forward and working with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee.
Thank you so much, I, I appreciate that. Uh, and I think in the interest of time, we will just go ahead with the next portion, thanks so much for that, uh, that overview.
Thank you Chair George, I'm gonna do a quick introduction here of Michael Orman, who's the, um, head of. The Planning Manager for our Air Quality Division and really leading the work on several elements of our. Work to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon, he's gonna talk about two general areas today, one is. Uh, as you see in the slide before you, uh, reducing methane emissions from our landfills, this is important. Particularly because these gases are, um. Uh, some of the more potent, uh, greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon. He's also gonna talk, uh, a bit about the Every Mile Counts effort that we're. Undertaking jointly with the Oregon Department of Transportation, the Oregon Department of Energy, and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. To, um, again, make our transportation cleaner. But also to reduce the amount of reliance on automobiles, um. And, uh, as we heard from Corianne, to make our fuels cleaner, so, uh, a lot of different parts of that. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Michael, take it away.
Thank you Director Whitman, Chair George, Commissioners for the record. My name is Michael Orman, and I'm the Air Quality Planning Section Manager for DEQ. I will do my best to move swiftly through my slides and will point you all to the. Staff report and some of the content that ma- made available there on, on more detailed updates on. Where the landfill methane rule is and, uh, the updates on our progress for EMC as well, but. With that, I'll move to the next slide, please. So as you might recall, um, Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-four instructed DEQ to investigate landfill methane capture and control requirements established. Uh, in neighboring states and, and implement some regulations that represent the most stringent of. The, those standards for Oregon to implement here. Uh, currently, we're implementing federal regulations to control landfill gas emissions. And, uh, the, the research and development and design of those rules that, uh, we're working through in a Rules Advisory Committee at this point. Uh, was really, um, designed to implement existing commission authority, and so we're using. Uh, that, that process to design the rules, uh, now. Next slide, please. Uh, so as, uh, this slide notes, we've had two rule advisory committee meetings, and I'm sure, um, consistent with the three, the theme that you've been hearing up to this point on. Uh, how great our rule is, advisory, advisory committees have gone, uh, this has been a very productive group of stakeholders who have been helping us design this rule. Uh, we've received a lot of really valuable feedback. And, um, we've been adjusting the rules based off of that information. And so, um, we, we plan to have the next, uh, advisory committee, which will cover the fiscal impacts of the rule in April. And bring, um, the final proposed rules for your consideration in July. Next slide. Just some highlights from the rulemaking up to this point, uh, we've really heard a lot of feedback around making sure that we're capturing. Um, more data, and that's something that we. Uh, noted in, in the neighboring states, in California specifically, uh, has a different threshold for requiring capture and control. And also more data collection leading up to that threshold to inform, uh, the agency on, um. How, the types of emissions and the amount of emissions, and, uh, when the right point is for a capture system to be deployed. Um, we also received a lot of feedback around flexibility and, but also maintaining the stringency of the program, and so we've been exploring different options. Uh, one example I highlighted there was just post-shutdown. Um, you know, what information should the department collect? In order to ensure that the landfill actually is having a, a, a minor generation of methane emissions. And doesn't need to be running or, or operating their capture collection system. Um, and also, we've been discussing with the, with the Rules Advisory Committee municipal and industrial landfills, which is. Somewhat unique, um, and that's, uh, the proposal that we're moving forward at this point is to. And that's the proposal that we're moving forward at this point is to apply these regulations to both municipal and industrial landfills. That is the conclusion of landfill methane updates. Happy to answer questions now on that, or I can move on to the next.
Let's keep going.
Okay. Next, I'll cover Every Mile Accounts, which is another effort that started with the Executive Order 20-04. As you may recall, it, it started back in November of 2019. The forming, the formation of the four agencies, we worked together over the spring and summer of 2020 to develop a work plan in an effort that we now call Every Mile Accounts. The focus of EMC was identifying projects within the authority of the agencies and their commissions that would make progress towards the goals of the statewide transportation strategy. And partner agencies posted our work plan and sought feedback from the public through a survey and general comment on the plan during the summer of last year. The agencies delivered a final work plan to the governor's office in July of 2020, and we're now implementing the work plan items. In the slide notes, some equity workshops that we held, and I'll get into that in the future in a couple of slides. Next slide, please. As we were working on our work plan, the agencies also worked on memorializing the process that we would follow in collaboration to support each other and also to make sure that we're communicating up and down our own internal management structures on progress that we're making and how we're informing our commissions on the work. And that's, that was memorialized in a memorandum of understanding between the four agencies. And so we, we acknowledged in that effort that this is a, this is a long-term engagement between the agencies and, and focused collaboration. And while our current work plan is, is scoped for two years, we're, we're all aware that it's, this is not a one-time fix, that this is going to be an ongoing engagement and that we'll continue to evaluate projects and set up new work plans in the future. Next slide. For this round of the work plan, the agencies identified three areas to focus projects on and actions, and those are reducing vehicle miles traveled per capita, furthering the adoption of clean vehicles and fuels within Oregon's fleets, and integrating greenhouse gas emissions and decision-making. And the agencies identified actions around these core areas to include in our work plan. And the development also included consideration of how to integrate climate justice and equity into the identified actions, which I'll go into in more detail on the next slide. Next slide, please. So the agencies, to receive feedback from stakeholders, held two workshops with key equity stakeholders to discuss the EMC work plan and how agencies could proceed with their actions in a way that was guided by equity principles and that resulted in equitable outcomes. In both meetings, the agency, agencies received focused feedback on draft guiding principles and equitable outcomes. And the agencies also received feedback on how to adjust our public process and stakeholder engagement to make those activities more equitable. Also, the agencies heard from multiple stakeholders that we need to consider how our metrics that we use to measure the outcomes of our actions in Every Mile Accounts also capture the outcomes in, in equity and making sure that we are considering how where our actions are also not having adverse impacts on equity and also lifting up equity as something to focus on. In another way of saying it is measure what matters and so setting up our metrics in that sense. The agencies are finalizing a summary of the feedback we received and how we plan to incorporate it into our Every Mile Accounts work plan. And we'll make that information available on our web, on the Every Mile Accounts website, which is hosted by our ODOT partners. Next slide. This slide covers, lists the different actions that each of the agencies have committed to take over the next two years. Many of these are already in progress and I'll briefly cover some of the details here. And I'll point the Commission to the staff report for updates on, on our lead actions for DEQ. There are more details in the staff report for those. And I'll move on to our partner agencies. And so ODOT is leading our, an effort on identifying infrastructure needs for Oregon's Every Mile Count or every ever-growing fleet of electric vehicles. And the, in the summer of last year, ODOT hired a consultant to study the various infrastructure needs, received feedback from stakeholders, and should have a final report to share this summer. And that, that will be really informative about where and how we expand infrastructure to support electric vehicles in the state and, and other forms of alternative fuels as well. ODOT is also leading development of metrics for the agency. The agencies will use to measure the impacts of our Every Mile Accounts actions. And that's, we call it performance measures, and that will include the, the metrics that we use for greenhouse gas reductions, but also how do we adjust for equity? ODOT is leading the effort on organizing the inter-agencies' ZEP action plan, which is a list of additional actions the agencies are taking to further ZEP adoption. And that plan is scoped to be finalized this summer and will be posted on our Zero Emission Vehicle Interagency Working Group website, which is hosted by ODOT. And finally, Department of Land Conservation and Development is working on a climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking, which encompasses the three bodies of work listed on the slide, transportation planning rules, scenario and local climate pollution reduction planning, and parking management. And those activities are really focused on ensuring that we're considering the greenhouse gas impacts as we do our transportation planning activities. And, and they're working through that rulemaking. It's been put on pause at this point, but they'll pick it back up this summer and, and keep it moving forward. So I know I moved quickly through that content. Happy to answer any questions at this point.
Well, we appreciate you, you doing that to help us get a little bit closer to our schedule. I am not seeing any hands from the Commissioners at this time. So thank you very much. Thank all the presenters. It's great to get this update and this work is, we know, going to be underway for some time. All right, some applause there from the Director. Excellent. All right, well, unless we have anything else, we will just keep moving and stay with this, this topic and give an opportunity for those in the community who want to share their thoughts with us about, about this work on greenhouse gas reduction programs. Stephanie, I know that you have a few notes for everyone before we jump into that.
And thank you Chair George. As some members of our audience today have already started to do, if you are connected by the Zoom platform and would like to present a comment, please use the raise hand function. Usually this is found at the bottom of your participant list. If you are connected only by phone, please use the star nine on your touchtone phone to indicate this. I am currently writing down names. I believe I see 18 hands. It will take me just a moment. Chair George, I will confirm numbers very shortly and we will check in for how much time is available for commenters.
Okay. Well, and because we do see that we have a lot of commenters and we really do want to hear from as many people as possible, perhaps I'll just share the reminder that if you share the same perspective as somebody who's spoken before you, it's perfectly acceptable to say, you know, and I agree with the comments of so-and-so. And we will give that, you know, the full emphasis in understanding that, that is your thought and the way that you would, what you want to, us to hear from you today. And, and we will check the time. I will provide a warning before folks are finished with their time allotment, just to give you an opportunity to wrap up your thoughts. And then at the conclusion of your time, I'll say thank you very much and I'll ask you to just wrap up your thought then. It's, it's great to see that we have so many people who are interested in commenting, but we will try to, to do what we can to let everybody have a chance to share their thoughts with us today.
And thank you Chair George. My count for total hands raised at this time is 23 people. And when you are 24, and when you are ready, Chair George, I will open the line for our first commenter today.
Okay, great. So yeah, we want to try to hear from everybody, but we're going to try to ask to, to move through this as efficiently as we can so that we can do this. So yes, please go ahead and open up the line for our first commenter and welcome.
Thank you Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your Commissioner's Assistant. The first commenter today is Ally Rosenbluth.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ally Rosenbluth. I'm a member of the Rulemaking Advisory Committee for the Climate Protection Program and the Campaign Director at Rogue Climate, which is based in Jackson County and Coos County, Oregon. First off, I want to thank this Commission for advocating for my position to serve on the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. This September, my community experienced climate chaos firsthand when the Almeida fire burned down 3,000 structures, including our office. Over the last six months, much of our work has been to support the hundreds who are still displaced by this climate-fueled wildfire. We have a decade to transition off of fossil fuels to give communities the best shot of survival through climate chaos. We really have only one shot to get this program right. I am here today to uplift a letter that was sent to the Commission earlier this week from over 30 organizations across Oregon who are very concerned with the direction of this rulemaking process so far. The Climate Protection Program is currently poised to exempt Oregon's largest polluters from regulation. Instead of placing the burden for achieving emissions reductions, or instead, DEQ is suggesting we place the burden for achieving emissions reductions on smaller entities. Furthermore, DEQ's current modeling largely overlooks the impacts of environmental justice and frontline communities despite the program's stated goal being to reduce the burden on these communities. DEQ has not given the RAC a clear legal reason why the EQC does not have authority to regulate greenhouse gas pollution from Oregon's top polluters, especially considering DEQ regulates other pollutants from these, these very facilities. On leakage, DEQ fails to provide a clear economic analysis to demonstrate why this is true, why it conflicts with the goals of the program, and why these issues cannot be addressed through additional rulemaking and regulation through the PUC. Whether or not HB 2021 passes this legislative session, exempting Oregon's top polluters from the Climate Protection Program is not an effective or equitable program. We strongly urge the Environmental Quality Commission to direct DEQ to reverse course now before the rulemaking process proceeds much further. Excluding the largest polluters in the state will result in ineffectual program that fails to meet the state's greenhouse gas reduction goals and ignores the significant harm that these facilities pose to communities of color, low-income, and rural communities.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair George. The next person on the list has a display name of Cascadia Wildlands, and they should now be able to present comment.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dylan Plummer. Chair George, Members of the Commission, thank you so much for providing this opportunity for public testimony. My name is Dylan Plummer. I'm the grassroots organizer with Cascadia Wildlands, an environmental nonprofit based in Eugene, Oregon. In my work with Cascadia Wildlands, I organize with a broad coalition of social and climate justice, public health, and tenants advocacy organizations called the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition. This coalition is striving to address the grievous impacts of frat gas in our city. As such, I was alarmed to hear that the Department of Environmental Quality was planning to exclude frat gas power plants from its 2021 greenhouse gas emissions program. The people of Eugene know all too well the impacts that frat gas poses to our public health and safety and to our climate, and the disproportionate impacts that this polluting fuel has on frontline community members. The use of frat gas is the fastest-growing source of emissions in the city of Eugene. And similarly, frat gas power plants make up the top six climate polluters in Oregon. It is a grievous oversight to exempt them from increased greenhouse gas regulations in the face of the climate crisis and the growing racial and economic inequities that are plaguing our state. The agency's current plans will place the burden of greenhouse gas emissions in their co-pollutants like smog forming and cancer-causing VOCs squarely on BIPOC and other marginalized communities across the state. Environmental justice should be Oregon DEQ's top priority in designing this program, not the desire of frat gas polluters to avoid costs and inefficiencies for their polluting industry. Governor Kate Brown says she's serious about climate action, but Oregon DEQ's proposed actions fly in the face of her Executive Order 2004, which calls on state agencies to use any and all authority and discretion available to meet Oregon's climate goals. Exempting our state's largest polluters, frat gas power plants scattered across the state, from Oregon's new emissions reductions program conflicts directly with Executive Order 2004 and undermines our governor's climate leadership. If we are to take the bold steps called for by the world's leading climate scientists to mitigate the worst impacts of the climate crisis on our communities, our state, and our planet, and to build a more sustainable and equitable Oregon, we will need to entirely phase these power plants out of our energy grid as soon as possible. If we miss this opportunity to regulate the emissions of these plants, we are only going to make a just transition for our state more difficult in the future while exacerbating existing environmental justice concerns. If DEQ does not change course, communities such as the ones our coalition represent in Eugene will be unable-
To apologize, but to allow everybody to speak, we are going to have to limit people. But thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
And thank you Chair George. The next person in the speakers list has a display name of Power Pass Frat Gas.
Welcome.
Chair George, Members of the Commission, my name is Dan Sears. I'm the Conservation Director of Columbia Riverkeeper and we are a member of the Power Pass Frat Gas Coalition. It's a growing coalition of over 30 grassroots and advocacy organizations standing up to the pollution that comes from the frat gas industry. I'll just be blunt, a climate protection program that excludes the top six polluters in Oregon cannot and will not be taken seriously. DEQ's arguments for excluding frat gas power plants have shifted between concerns about its legal authority and the idea that electricity production would leak to other states. DEQ is prioritizing the vague potential for economic harm to polluters over the guaranteed real-life pollution experienced in Oregon communities, including the BIPOC and other frontline communities that DEQ purported to protect during town halls this fall. DEQ's about-face is profoundly troubling. On the first issue, DEQ clearly has the authority to regulate pollution from frat gas plants. It does so already. DEQ can regulate greenhouse gas pollution just like anything else. And DEQ should not use the nebulous promise of future legislation as a cop-out for doing its job now to reduce frat gas pollution. We asked DEQ to hold to its promise and goal of addressing both climate-changing pollution and its health-harming co-pollutants like VOCs and particulate matter. Doing so requires taking on the state's biggest polluters, and they are all frat gas power plants. All six of them, the top six. During town halls last fall, DEQ gave no indication that it saw a roadblock in being able to regulate the electricity sector. In fact, DEQ's presentations gave the distinct impression that DEQ intended to regulate almost every aspect of large-scale stationary, stationary in-state frat gas combustion. Obviously, Oregonians assumed that the state's top six polluters would be included. And yet, here we are, and DEQ proposes to leave them out. On the leakage issue, this should, there's, this should not be an excuse for allowing frat gas plants off the hook. First, leakage should be addressed through scopeful rulemaking and future action by the PUC and the legislature. Second, DEQ should be solving first and foremost for the protection of BIPOC and other marginalized communities in developing this program. The triangle has been distorted dramatically.
We have to let other people speak as well. We do-
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair George. The next person in the speakers list is Alan Journet.
Welcome. Are you with a speaker? Alan, Journet, you're, you may be muted. There you go.
Sorry, I think that's better. Sorry. Chair George and Members of the Commission, my name is Alan Journet. I'm co-facilitator of SOCAN, based in Jacksonville, Oregon. I am submitting, I have submitted comments. This is a summary. According to the Executive Order, Oregon's greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 should be at least 80% below 1990 levels, meaning 11.6 million metric tons. By proposing the exemption of electricity generations from the Climate Protection Program, DEQ immediately proposes exempting 10.8 million metric tons of 29 emissions. This was listed in a slide we just saw as 24% of emissions, suggesting that DEQ has calculated a slightly higher contribution. This doesn't even account for the increasing demand resulting from electrification that will increase the need for generation by 2050. Then, by suggesting that a threshold for fuel suppliers could be 300,000 metric tons, DEQ offered an option that would result in another 3.4 million metric tons of emissions for a total of over 14 million metric tons, well above the Executive Order target of at least 80% below 1990 levels. These proposals would completely defeat the Executive Order 2050 goal, regardless of what other agencies achieve. Given the propensity of- Given the propensity of one party simply to walk out to defeat action on popular legislation, DEQ cannot rely on that to solve problems. The Climate Protection Plan must assume no legislation and must address all problems within its rules. Given the urgency of the climate crisis, I urge the Environmental Quality Commission to require that DEQ develop a program that achieves the 2050 Executive Order goal and that all sectors are included in the DEQ Climate Protection Plan under development, including the electric sector. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. We're ready for our next speaker.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patricia Colbert.
Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
We hear you.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Colbert. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify. I am a retired physician and public health official, and I'm speaking today on behalf of Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility. We are opposed to the proposed exemption of frat gas power plants from the greenhouse gas emission program. DEQ makes two arguments in favor. One, if we impose costly greenhouse gas regulations on frat gas electric plants, energy purchasers will look for dirtier and cheaper electricity elsewhere, for example, from coal-fired plants. This is a defeatist argument, which reinforces the status quo and does nothing to avert climate disaster. Exempting the largest greenhouse gas emitters would make it difficult, if not impossible, to meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals. Further, this problem, a so-called market leakage, which may or may not occur, could be prevented by further regulatory action. Why would the people of Oregon want to cave in to the same market dynamics that brought us to the brink of climate disaster when we have other options within our grasp? DEQ has also argued that the frat gas industry could sue the state of Oregon for overstepping their legal authority, but the state already has the statutory authority to regulate greenhouse gas emissions. Further, a courthouse challenge could be an opportunity to increase public awareness of the critical role the frat gas industry plays in worsening climate change and could bolster public support for stronger environmental regulation. For DEQ to throw in the towel even before they are challenged reveals a shocking lack of commitment to fixing our climate problem. This proposed exemption begins to smell like yet another giveaway to private interests. This is very damaging to the already tarnished reputation of DEQ as being narrowly rule-bound and ineffective. Thank you very much for your time and attention today.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tim Miller.
Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the chance to talk to Chair George and Commissioners. I have just a few quick points. My name is Tim Miller. I'm the Director of Oregon Business for Climate. I've really enjoyed working with DEQ, and I applaud the team's efforts. I've been part of these discussions since last summer, and they've done great work to be inclusive and address lots of different needs, but I have a couple of quick points. One is, you heard about the goals of emissions equity and cost. I'm afraid that that triangle starts with a bit of a scarcity mentality. The cost element in that triangle should be economics. There are both costs and opportunities in addressing climate change. Let's not forget the opportunities here. There are innovation and development and operations and products and services that Oregon can lead on if we take advantage of these opportunities. Let's keep that in mind as we design these programs and not ace ourselves out of the opportunities of being leaders. Second, in the illustrative example you saw, there was, for example, a thirty million metric tons in the chart, and you see some nice lines going down towards zero. The chart should be sixty million metric tons or something akin to what our total emissions are so that you, as Commissioners, get the whole picture. As senior leaders, you want to get the whole picture and get a good understanding of what's being covered and what's not being covered. Also, there's interaction between what's on the chart and what's off the chart where we electrify vehicles and buildings. Well, that's going to push emissions into the electric side, and you need to see that in the chart. Finally, you've heard a lot about exemptions, big concerns there. I don't need to reiterate all that, except that, to be fair, across businesses, let's not be on the road of exemptions. You talked about, we talked about natural gas, but I'm sure there are going to be other sectors who are going to come to DEQ and say, "What about us? Our emissions are unavoidable." Well, no, everybody needs to make progress. Everybody needs to innovate. There should be no exemptions. Let's not start on that path. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us today. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Erin Saylor.
Welcome.
Hi Chair George, members of the Commission. My name is Erin Saylor. I'm a staff attorney at Columbia Riverkeeper. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I wanted to express to you our extreme concern about DEQ's decision to exempt the electric sector from this program and to comment on a couple of things that DEQ presented to you today. First, the agency notes that most fossil fuel electricity emissions are generated out of state. This completely ignores the fact that the frat gas plants that do operate in the state generate over half of all of the greenhouse gas emissions in the state. In 2019, the six frat gas power plants that operate within the state emitted over one million tons more greenhouse gases than every other permitted stationary source in the state combined. DEQ's program simply will not be effective if it exempts these emissions from regulation under the program. It's our understanding that the 100% Clean Bill that Director Whitman referenced only addresses retail electricity used within the state. It does not address electricity that is generated in Oregon for use in other neighboring states. So if DEQ exempts the electric sector from regulation under its Climate Protection Program, we could end up with a situation where Oregon becomes a dumping ground for emissions generated for out-of-state users. Additionally, the carbon rules managed by the Energy Facility Sign and Council are extremely ineffective. In many, if not most, cases, the generating facilities already in operation have been grandfathered into emissions limits and offset rates that are grossly inadequate and outdated. We have yet to see anything in writing from DEQ that cites to the specific legal reasons why DEQ feels that FSX authorities prevent the agency from including the electric sector in this new program. To slow the impacts of climate change, we need to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And Chair George, the next speaker is Pat DiLaquille.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you Chair George, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Pat DiLaquille, and I'm an expert in energy systems modeling and policy analysis related to optimizing emission reduction pathways. I live in Gresham, and I organize with the Metro Climate Action Team, which is a community of experienced volunteers working to steward significant greenhouse gas reduction legislation into law in Oregon. DEQ needs to make some critical improvements into how it's framing the proposed Climate Protection Program. At the second RAC meeting, DEQ clarified that it defined the scope of the program to be only one component in a set of programs designed to achieve the targets in the Executive Order. And it explained its rationale for excluding the electricity sector. I'm not going to go into that. Many people have already discussed that. But when I look at the modeling results, there was nothing in the modeling results regarding the electricity sector and other non-regulated sectors that were included in the, that they were not included in the modeling presentation, even though those sectors are covered by the IPM model that was used in the analysis and the policy scenario itself, the design applied to cap, excuse me, across all regulated and non-regulated sectors. And this lack of context created considerable confusion in understanding these preliminary modeling results, which you've already heard. The unreported information is critical to having a complete understanding of what's happening in both the regulated and non-regulated sectors. If that's the approach that DEQ is going to take, and we need to understand what the assumptions are, both regarding the reference scenario and the policy scenarios that is taking place during, I mean, what are the assumptions in the policy scenarios for these non-affected, or these non-regulated sectors, especially the electricity sector? So DEQ needs to put all the cards on the table, show us all the results of what's happening to meet the governor's executive order and where the Climate Protection Program fits into that picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next speaker has a display name of 350 Eugene.
Welcome. 350 Eugene, it looks like you're muted.
I apologize Chair George. That was my error. They should now be able to unmute.
How's that?
Perfect.
Am I there?
You are.
Thank you so much. Good day, Chair George and members of the Commission. My name is Deborah McGee. I have lived and farmed in the same land for thirty-five years outside of Eugene. Seven years ago, I began my involvement to fight for a stable climate by co-founding 350 Eugene because I oppose the 235-mile frat gas export terminal Jordan Coben Pacific Connector Energy Project. I'm speaking today on behalf of the over 2,000 supporters of 350 Eugene. To say you are going to reduce carbon emissions while at the same time allowing six gas-frat plants to continue is like me saying I have a goal of losing twenty pounds, but I plan to exempt all sugar products from my calorie counting. I'm not going to reach my goals, and neither is Oregon. More than once, I have seen the gas industry's slideshow presentation about renewable gas, and I will tell you, it's a farce. It takes frat gas to make renewable gas. It is only renewable if it is made from solar or wind. The gas industry talks about more methane garbage or more concentrated dairy methane garbage, and those are two things we don't need more of. And even if they can actually succeed in producing a quantity of renewable gas, even they admit at best it's only twenty percent. Eighty percent remains frat. As an environmental justice organizer, I will tell you, burning fossil fuels kills people. Please don't take baby steps that allow the further fracking extraction and burning of fossil fuels. Be bold. Protect the health and safety of all Oregonians. We have your back. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts today. Next speaker.
Next speaker has a display name Zachariah Baker.
Welcome.
Thank you Chair George and members of the Environmental Quality Commission. My name is Zach Baker, Oregon Policy Manager with Climate Solutions. I'm also a member of the Climate Protection Program RAC. You heard from me a number of times over the last year, most recently at January's EQC meeting, raising flags about program design issues being presented by DEQ at the start of the formal rulemaking. We're now almost halfway through the RAC process, and I still have the same concerns and more. First, DEQ has continued to be unwilling to provide any assurances that they will propose a program with emission reduction targets that track the best available science. In fact, DEQ is modeling a scenario that doesn't even include the 2035 target in the governor's executive order, which should be a minimum. After much pushback, DEQ decided to also model a set of targets that would go above and beyond the targets in the executive order. That was a step in the right direction, but no insurance has been provided that DEQ will ultimately propose those targets. First, a science-based agency whose mission is to protect the environment, waffling on whether the targets should be consistent with best available science is untenable. Second, instead of trying to design a program to be as ambitious as the science demands, DEQ continues to propose and consider exempting entities from regulation under the program. The exemptions they are considering for gas-fired power plants, oil companies, and other industry exemptions likely total upwards of one quarter of all of the emissions they could cover under the program. We have not received an exact number from DEQ despite requests on that. And since there was a specific discussion of electricity, I'll echo other commenters that it is definitely not as clean-cut as it was made out to be, and relying on that pie chart is misleading. I'll just add that coal-to-clean legislation on the books would not allow coal to be imported after 2030, coal electricity to be imported after 2030. PGE made a commitment to reduce emissions significantly. Our neighbors, Southern, North, and South, both have 100% clean laws on the books. The window for importing dirty energy is closing rapidly. Studies across the country have shown that any risk of leakage doesn't outweigh the benefits of reducing harmful emissions. There are also ways to mitigate some or all of the possible leakage risk, but they've been unwilling to explore any of those ideas. DEQ could also at least cover some portions, even if not all. For example, could at least regulate new gas plants where there is no leakage concern since they don't even exist yet. And we can, I'll just echo others, that we can rely on the legislature. It's why we're here in the first place with Cap and Erdoos. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, everyone. I do ask that you try to observe the timeframe. I do know it's brief, but I see so many hands before me. We do want to be able to hear from everyone. Welcome, next speaker.
Next speaker is Ilsa Purse.
Thank you for letting me in. My name is Ilsa Purse. I'm with Stop the Dump Coalition in Yamhill County, a group that has spent over twelve years working to prevent the expansion of riverbed landfill located in an extreme seismic hazard zone on liquefiable soil on the banks of the South Yamhill River. We've been before you many times over the past twelve years. You could immediately cut methane emissions by denying Waste Management a permit to continue operating riverbed landfill. The only landfill in Oregon that has been issued a notice of violation by the EPA for violating the Clean Air Act for the past number of years due to all of the emission that comes of methane just from the surface of the dump. You're going to get a chart from me that shows how EPA has deemed this a high-priority violation site for the past nine quarters. Flaring gas at dumps is not a remedy. Riverbend has a very active flare, and it sells its gas to the local utility, laughingly billing it as renewable energy, even though it takes a mountain of garbage to make that energy. The notice of violation from the EPA clearly shows that Riverbend is oozing methane from its very surface. This meeting comes at an opportune time. In the next few weeks, DEQ will be considering renewing Riverbend's air quality permit. Renewing this permit in face of nine quarters of violating the Clean Air Act would make a mockery of everything DEQ is supposed to do. You have an ample, you have a great opportunity now to literally cut an enormous amount of methane from your projected methane required allotment by closing this dump, which is the largest landfill violator in the state of Oregon and which has now gone on to EPA's list of the most damaging things in the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Janet Lorenzen.
Chair George and Commission members, I'm Dr. Janet Lorenzen, a professor at Willamette University. When climate programs attempt to include equity, they tend to do it in only minor ways. I call this the "and equity" frame because it's a side project to the main program. This is the case with the alternative compliance instruments and community climate instruments. However, equity needs to be embedded in the program. So there are many questions that the DEQ needs to answer in the next RAC meeting. Are pollution sources that affect EJ communities the most included in the Climate Protection Program? Will stationary sources in or near EJ communities need to reduce their emissions on-site for, say, two to five years before accessing alternative compliance instruments? Basically, what we need is a program where equity is integrated into all aspects of the program, and it's not just a side project. The DEQ has talked, really talked up equity and set themselves a very high bar, so I'm hoping that they're going to meet that high bar at the next RAC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kellen Belcher.
Welcome. Speaker, could it be that your mute button is on? Karen, are you with us? Is your mute button on? Stephanie, it looks like Karen may be having a problem there. Is it possible to move on to the next speaker and come back to her if she works that out?
Yes, Chair George, I will go to the next speaker, and then we will revisit the prior speaker to make sure they have an opportunity to present their comments. Just a moment, the next speaker, Diane Hodiak.
Welcome.
Good day, and Chair George and Commission members, I'm Diane Hodiak, Director of 350 Deschutes. Governor Brown's executive order instructs DEQ to take actions necessary to cap and reduce greenhouse gas emissions from large stationary sources consistent with science-based goals. The EO does not say DEQ shall exempt the top polluters in Oregon, which are electricity generation and our frat gas plants. The EO further mentions an urgent moral obligation and the need to reduce emissions given the impacts to environmental justice communities. Fossil fuel plants, Oregon's biggest polluters, emit carbon monoxide, dioxide, lead, sulfur dioxide, NOx, and particulates, all deadly to human health, as criteria pollutants say fall under DEQ's charge to be regulated. Exempting Oregon's top polluters is not fair or good even for the program itself. Exempting Oregon's top polluters is not fair or good even for the program itself. I call this an abdication of duty by DEQ at a time when science says we need bold reductions. I have great concern about reaching these goals, given DEQ's cap and reduce proposals. Even worse, giving fossil fuel plants permission to pollute is a death sentence, a prescription for a lifetime of health issues and health costs and hardly qualifies under the moral obligation clause. The EO aims to protect health and climate and directs us from the governor to enforce this order and compliance by agencies to science-based goals as required. Only close to a zero emission threshold that includes all human-caused pollution sources and few suppliers, no matter their size, will bring fairness and a chance to reach these emission reduction goals. I hope Governor Brown and our government agencies will honor, not ignore, this charge to protect Oregonians. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Chair George, we will return to Kellen Belcher.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
We hear you great.
Great. I switched to phone audio and that seems to have solved it. Good morning. My name is Kellen Belcher and I'm with the Environmental Defense Fund. I want to start by echoing Zach Baker's comments and then also provide EDF's perspective on the national importance of this program as a model for state climate leadership. EDF has extensive experience designing climate policies and programs in U.S. states at the federal level and around the world. Over the past year, we have been engaging in DEQ's stakeholder process for informing the Climate Protection Program rulemaking. If Oregon creates a strong climate protection program, it can provide a powerful template for what state-level climate leadership ought to look like and would show a clear and replicable path forward for other states who need to get serious fast about delivering real emissions reductions in the face of the climate crisis. But for this effort to be successful, Oregon must develop an ambitious program that is designed to guarantee that economy-wide emissions reduction targets are achieved. The program must cover all major emitting sectors and function as a climate backstop that ensures that the greenhouse gas emissions are reduced at a pace that at minimum meets the climate targets laid out in Governor Brown's executive order. If we miss this opportunity to make progress, it will have lasting effects both within Oregon and beyond Oregon. The work that DEQ, the EQC, and the RAC are doing is essential for climate progress, both here in Oregon and as a critical example of climate leadership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your thoughts today. I appreciate it. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Bob Yonkey.
Good morning, Chairman George and members. I represent Elders Climate Action, which is also an organization that's been very active with U.S. Climate Action Network in developing their national vision for how to achieve zero emissions. Our primary concern is that DEQ is not honoring the science by not committing to achieving zero emissions. What the scientists have told us, beginning with the 2018 IPCC report, is that we can only stabilize the climate when we stop adding greenhouse gas emissions to the atmosphere. So zero emissions must be the target. President Biden has now adopted zero emissions as the target for the United States. California and Washington governors have both adopted zero emissions as their target. And Oregon stands out as being a laggard in not making that commitment. It's a commitment that is essential in order to protect Oregon itself. What we've seen in the last summer was devastating wildfires that burned double the area of 2017. When a report first came out saying that wildfire areas in Oregon would double twice in the next decade. So we've already seen that area double to 1.2 million acres last summer. And it's expected to double again to 2.5 million acres. And that's annually. That's the fire zone that we can expect every year going forward over the next decade. The consequences for Oregon will be devastating. We must have commitment to achieving zero emissions. All the exemptions that you've heard about from other speakers today are defeating that goal. And thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker in my list is Charles Ariford.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George, members of the Commission. My name is Chuck Arford and I have lived in Eugene, Oregon for over 30 years. I appreciate your hard work. What natural gas corporations don't talk about and what we should focus on is methane leakage from natural gas production and use. No one knows how much methane is leaking, but here's what we do know. A dramatic and surprising surge in atmospheric methane has been recorded in recent years, corresponding with the rapid expansion of natural gas production and use in North America. Atmospheric methane now accounts for a quarter, 25% of all current global warming. And if unabated, could offset all the gains of the Paris Climate Accord. The largest study of methane leakage to date conducted by the Environmental Defense Fund found a 2.3% leak rate from natural, from the natural gas supply chain. But then researchers found the city of Boston had an additional methane leakage of 2.7% on top of the 2.3. So a lot of methane is leaking. And since atmospheric methane is such a potent greenhouse gas and since natural gas use also produces carbon dioxide, natural gas may cause two or three or four or five times as much warming as an equivalent amount of oil or coal. Scientists say that global warming is happening much faster and it's much more advanced than previously thought. Methane leakage from fracked gas is the wild card. Natural gas is a disaster for our planet. Now, the good news is since methane leaves the atmosphere much more quickly than carbon dioxide, the fastest way to slow global warming is to stop using natural gas. Right now, immediately. This is math. This is science. This is common sense. Please don't exempt the largest producers of greenhouse gases in Oregon from Oregon's greenhouse gas regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nora Apter.
Thank you, Chair George and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today regarding DEQ's Climate Protection Program. Again, for the record, my name is Nora Apter and I'm the Climate Program Director for the Oregon Environmental Council. As a native Oregonian, I am proud of our state's legacy of environmental stewardship and climate leadership. That's why I am deeply concerned that Oregon is losing ground on a vital opportunity to make progress in the fight against climate change. Under EO 2004, DEQ and the EQC are charged with taking actions to help achieve our greenhouse gas reduction goals, including by establishing a program to cap and reduce emissions from Oregon's largest climate polluters. Unfortunately, by positioning to exempt major polluters from the program, including gas-fired power plants and some oil companies, as well as considering emissions reduction targets not consistent with the best available science, DEQ and the EQC risk falling short of these goals. Providing exemptions for the oil and gas industry and slow-rolling emissions reductions after already decades of costly inaction will only require more drastic and expensive measures to be taken in the future. Conversely, a strong climate protection program has the opportunity to revitalize local Oregon economies by encouraging investment in clean energy and other innovative technology and will provide immediate health benefits to BIPOC and other vulnerable communities by reducing harmful co-polluters. We urge the EQC to help course correct and maximize climate inequity outcomes under the Climate Protection Program by ensuring emissions reductions targets that track the best available science and hold polluters accountable for their climate destruction. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment and we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you for sharing your time with us today. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Theodora Songas.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
You're just great.
Good morning, Chair George and members of the Commission. I'm Dr. Theodora Songas. I'm an environmental health scientist and epidemiologist. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. If DEQ's new Climate Protection Program is intended to meet the state's climate goals, comply with the governor's executive order, and effectively address the climate emergency, DEQ cannot exempt the fracked gas electric power generators from regulation. With increased electrification, emissions will increase. As you well know, we are feeling the effects of a perfect storm of interconnected crises and the multiple health and environmental impacts of catastrophic climate disruption with exacerbated air pollution and increased respiratory and cardiovascular illness, shifts in distribution of communicable diseases with more frequent pandemics, threats to food and water security, increased frequency of severe storms and wildfires, and severe economic disruptions and infrastructure failures. The known connections between exposure to fossil fuel emissions and increased susceptibility to acute and chronic illness, including pandemic disease, and the known connections between catastrophic climate disruption and fossil fuel emissions, and the known connections between racial, ethnic, and economic disparities and increased risks of death and illness and shorter life expectancy among BIPOC communities appear to have been misunderstood by the Department of Environmental Quality. DEQ's failure to develop a plan to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases and to address the air pollutants contributed by the largest emitters in the state will put the cost in human life and health straight into the most impacted frontline communities. It's unacceptable for DEQ to try to pass the buck back to the legislature to address a serious and urgent problem within its purview. Please require DEQ to prepare a climate plan that actually reduces emissions and addresses health impacts. Thank you for your very hard work.
Thank you for your thoughts today.
Our next speaker is Nora Lehman.
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Chair George, members of the Commission, my name is Nora Lehman. I'm submitting this testimony on behalf of Families for Climate. Our organization mobilizes families, parents, and kids to take action for climate justice and a livable future for all. We are very distressed that this commission is planning to exempt fracked gas power plants from regulation when DEQ's own data shows that emissions from the electric sector, fracked gas power plants specifically, are the leading greenhouse gas polluters in the state of Oregon. And this data does not even include the significant upstream methane pollution, where fracked gas leaks from wells, pipes, compressors, and other equipment. Governor Brown's executive order on climate called on state agencies to use, quote, "any and all authority and discretion," end quote, "available to meet Oregon's climate goals." Exempting Oregon's largest polluters from this emissions reduction program conflicts directly with EO 2004 and is a shocking abrogation of DEQ's fundamental responsibilities. We've heard the argument that including the electric sector in this program will result in more power being generated out of state. But other states with similar programs have shown that this leakage can be minimized through additional regulatory mechanisms. In addition, by exempting the electric sector from regulation, DEQ risks the reverse happening. When Oregon adopts 100% clean energy standard, as is currently being developed in our legislature with HB 2021, such legislature would, such legislation would only address in-state electricity use and there would be nothing to prevent Oregon's fracked gas power plants from continuing to operate, serving out-of-state and private in-state users and using our state as a dumping ground for greenhouse gas emissions produced for those users, which would be profoundly unjust. In conclusion, Oregon needs both a 100% clean energy standard and effective greenhouse gas regulations. The legislature is currently crafting a strong 100% clean energy standard with HB 2021. We strongly urge the EQC to tell DEQ to reverse course now and include fracked gas power plants and the whole electricity sector in the new Climate Protection Program. Everyone, everywhere across the political spectrum agrees that children are our most precious gift and in this perilous moment, we must take bold action to preserve a future planet where they cannot merely survive but thrive.
I didn't want to have to mute you. I really appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are significantly behind schedule, so I am just going to ask all our speakers to limit their comments to two minutes. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is a person connected by phone. The last four digits shown on the display are 9819.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Liebowitz. I'm with the Douglas County Global Warming Coalition. And out of rural Douglas County that has been severely impacted by the climate-induced wildfires. I'd like to endorse the statement by Zach Baker and add the following. The models presented by DEQ that show 80 to 90% reduction are deceptive, deceptively illusory because it only reflects those which they choose to regulate. In order to achieve the goals of the executive order, they must not exempt any polluters. And at this point in time, by having a high threshold and excluding natural gas and the sadly misnamed RNG, we are condemned not to meet the goals. We have spent 30 years ignoring the best science and now we stand on the precipice of a climate catastrophe. My, my suggestion to DEQ is to stop looking for reasons not to control pollution and start looking for reasons to control the polluters. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts today.
Our next commenter is Ramsey McPhillips.
Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
We hear you just great.
Fantastic. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We've appeared in front of you many times. I'm the gentleman who is the farmer of standing next to Riverbend Landfill. My comments are directed primarily to the Director of DEQ. Mr. Whitman, I'm confused about the permitting process of DEQ. If Riverbend Landfill has a permit and the permit is not being adhered to, I don't understand why there isn't some sort of regulatory action against the permit that is not living up to the permit. Riverbend Landfill, as you know, has not been living up to its permit. And in a call to the Environmental Protection Agency this last week, they agree that Riverbend Landfill is not in compliance and has issued all sorts of violations. In fact, if you go on the EPA violation website, Riverbend Landfill is the only landfill in the country that has such violations for the Clean Air Act. That's right, Oregon has the landfill in the country with the worst emitting Clean Air Act violations. So I ask you, please, please, please do something. Find them, close them down, make them adhere to their permit. It's been going on for five years. Thank you. Really, please, please, please take some action. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for speaking with us today. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Margaret Cross.
Welcome.
Hi, Margaret Cross. I'm from McMinnville in Yamhill County. And I would like to amplify what Mr. McPhillips commented on. I very much welcome higher emission standards, but I wonder how these goals can be achieved, particularly with all the exceptions. But Oregon has a huge chronic underlying problem and that's enforcement of air quality violations. The current process is of questionable value. Violations are shrouded in secrecy. Local governments are not informed by violations, either by the government or the polluter. And despite violations and complaints, air quality permits are provisionally renewed without comment or input. Unfortunately, the very communities that are harmed often do not challenge polluters or permit violations, either because they're not informed about them or because the polluters produce revenue for their coffers in their election campaigns. Even if the enforcing agencies take the matter seriously, big polluters have enough lawyers and money, all deductible as a business expense to keep matters moving very slowly. Oregon underfunds enforcement. It underfunds DEQ. It does not support employees that are trying to implement strong enforcement. These, I've seen many employees leave out of sheer frustration. It's not clear to me that the proposed instrument exchange system will apply to landfills. But generally, these industries have more money than God and they have captive customers. They can easily and probably will continue to buy credits and carry on with their bad practices, just charging their customers more to cover the costs. Meanwhile, I see no attempt to improve current enforcement procedures and I see no serious consequence for serious and chronic violations, as Mr. McPhillips pointed out, without removal of exemptions and without strong, consistent quality enforcement. There will never be substantive. Thank you.
Appreciate your thoughts. Appreciate your thoughts. Yeah, and I'll just take a minute to remind people, please do limit your thoughts for two minutes. We have several more speakers that we want to hear from, and we also have additional agenda items that we need to get to. So we're very glad you're here with us. But please do the courtesy to other speakers to limit your comments to two minutes. Welcome.
Yes, I'm Deana Grossman. Good morning, Chair George and members of the commission. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for listening to public testimony today. I'm Deana T. Grossman and live in Portland, Oregon. Today, March 26, 2021, our air quality is good. So it is easy to forget that because of climate change, every summer, we have devastating wildfires which destroy our forests, our communities, and create hazardous air quality for days or weeks. Oregon's top polluters are all fracked gas plants. It is wrong to exempt these giant polluters from Oregon's new emissions reduction program. Governor Brown says she is serious about climate action, but Oregon's DEQ's proposed actions fly in the face of the Executive Order 2004, which calls on state agencies to use any and all authority and discretion available to meet Oregon's climate goals. Exempting our state's largest polluters, fracked gas power plants scattered across the state, from Oregon's new emission reduction program, conflicts directly with this executive order and flies in the face of any possibility that we as a state and as a region, as a nation, and as a world can make our world healthier again. Please, think again, and do not exempt Oregon's top polluters from greenhouse gas regulations. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts today. Next speaker.
And yeah, Chair George, I apologize. Our next speaker is Brad Reed.
Welcome.
Thanks so much, Chair George, commissioners. Thank you for listening to everybody today. This has been great to hear. I'm Brad Reed. I am the campaign manager for Renew Oregon, but today I'll be reading testimony from one of our volunteers, Helen Kennedy. So for the record, this is her testimony. For 12 years, Helen worked in state, federal, tribal, and territorial government as an environmental policy analyst, and later as an environmental attorney. Helen says, "I urge you and DEQ to act upon the mandates of Paragraph 3A through C of Executive Order 2004. We all know, particularly the DEQ staff, that the magnitude and urgency of the climate crisis will require us to use every tool in our policy toolbox. Our leaders in government must follow the best available science to cut GHC emissions in half by 2030. If the EQC seeks to reach at a minimum the EO's 2035 and 2050 emission reduction targets, then this must be fully implemented in mandates in the EO Paragraphs 3A through C." They direct the EQC and all of DEQ to use all legal discretionary power to reach GHC emission reductions, prioritize and expedite any processes and policies that could accelerate reductions in GHC emissions, and integrate reducing GHC emissions in policymaking, decision, planning, budgets, and investments. I propose that EQC formulate up the mandates in EO Paragraphs 3A through 3C. Also, EQC should require all programs to prepare detailed plans and schedules on how each will prioritize and expedite reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The EQC should review them at this May meeting. Plans should be implemented no later than July 22 of 2021 and include at a minimum all ongoing and future rulemakings, permit application forms and permit conditions, GHC reductions, priority language, and all formal communications to regulated entities, all policies, all enforcement order and supplement environmental project policy programs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker has a display name, MCAT.
Welcome.
Hello. MCAT stands for Metro Climate Action Team. My name is Jane Stackhouse. And in the interest of time, I would like to reiterate all of the previous testimony. I know and work with these people on climate action and agree wholeheartedly. So thank you for DEQ looking at electrification of vehicles. Thank you for reducing vehicle miles traveled. And please, let's cover all of the polluters in Oregon, including the big utilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your thoughts today.
Next speaker in the list is Kathy Moide.
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
You do.
Okay. I realize most of the previous people have talked about the electricity, but I'm concerned about the other, I guess what's called, liquid and gaseous fuels. It appears that DEQ is leaning toward only regulating the very top emitters, 300,000 metric tons. And I did some calculations, and it turns out by not going down to 25,000, you're leaving 3 million metric tons unregulated. I would also understand that they're thinking of having all of the regulation done at the supplier level. As has been pointed out, the large stationary sources are not only emitting a large amount of greenhouse gases, but also are major sources of the toxic co-pollutants. And so I think that the large stationary sources should be required to be regulated if they have large amounts of fuel emissions. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts today.
And Chair George, the last person in the speaker's list is a person connected by phone. The last four digits of their phone number shown are 1416.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We do.
Thank you, Chair George, and members of this commission. My name is Brian Hurey, and I live in Rainier, Oregon, a few miles south of the PGE Port Westward Gas Plant in Columbia County. I was disappointed to learn that this "natural gas plant" emits over 1 million tons of carbon dioxide per year, and I am even more disappointed to learn that under the proposed greenhouse gas programs, our state's Department of Environmental Quality will do nothing to reduce this massive carbon emission in my county. In trying to figure out the underlying reasons why, I have read that there might be a question around the legality of such regulation. And if that's the current legal advice being given to DEQ, then I suggest finding some different attorneys. It seems common sense to me that DEQ is exactly the proper authority to directly regulate the biggest sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon. During this past year of living through a pandemic, we have all seen how important leadership is during times of crisis. Our planet's health is in immediate crisis right now, and I am praying that those in positions of power at DEQ will have the courage to demonstrate effective leadership during this climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us today and to everyone who took time out of their busy lives to do that. So that concludes this public comment opportunity. We are significantly behind schedule for our director's report, but we also have to have some compassion to the human beings who have been sitting here and listening through all this. So again, thank you to everybody who spent your time today. We hear a lot of people, and please know that we do take your comments into consideration and into our conversations with DEQ. So let's take a 10-minute break and make every effort to be back on time and get underway. Are there any objections to proceeding like this? All right, seeing none. I will see everybody back here at 11:42.
Chair George, this is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. The recording will be paused during your break. Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone. All right, Director Whitman.
Thank you, Chair George. Members of the commission, for the record, Richard Whitman, DEQ director. I am going to try to make up some of our lost time here on the director's report. We're about, I think, about 25 minutes behind schedule now, so we'll do our best to try to make it up. I think I can make up much of that time. First of all, just want to note, appreciate all the testimony that we just heard on the greenhouse gas program and the sentiments that are expressed. Look forward to more conversation with the commission about this issue. On that note, I just want to give you a quick run-through of what's coming in terms of the next couple of commission meetings. The schedule we have for you is, the next commission meeting is May 20th and 21st. And we will be on the agenda currently for that May meeting. We've got the annual check-in with you on the state of Oregon's environment. We did that presentation about a year ago, and we're planning to do an update of that for you again at the May meeting. We also expect to have the high-hazard real rulemaking before you at the May meeting. That's the agenda item that we were going to hear yesterday but needed to postpone to get some things appropriately lined up for you to consider. And then the meeting after that is July 22nd and 23rd. And right now, it's a fairly full agenda with a potential action item on the regional haze program, a rulemaking implementing the legislation on diesel retrofits for trucks, a fee increase rulemaking for the Title V air quality program, and then another rulemaking that has been postponed a little bit for us to do some more work, which is the Clean Water State Revolving Fund rulemaking. And this rulemaking is specifically around how to make some monies in the Clean Water State Revolving Fund available for repair and replacement of failing septic systems. This is an issue that is dogging environmental programs really across the nation. And I think Washington Ecology has provided some models of ways to get at this issue that we're looking at trying to emulate here in Oregon. So that rulemaking will also be coming in July. And then later in the fall, early fall, we've got landfill methane rulemaking we expect will be coming. So those are only just a few pieces of what's coming to the EQC. But just to give you a sense, one other thing I want to mention, I mentioned yesterday my congratulations for Chair George and Vice Chair Barasso for being reappointed. Commissioner Mosby is also coming up on the end of his term here. And I am starting to work with the governor's office and the governor on potential nominees for not only Commissioner, former Commissioner Addington, but also a bit for Commissioner Mosby as well. And so stay tuned on that. But we may have some onboarding to do for the commission here, starting before too long. So any questions about that before I go on? Okay.
No, only to, won't be the first time, it won't be the last, but to say how much we tremendously appreciate the service of Commissioner Mosby. And it will be sad to see him leave, but we completely understand that he has a life to enjoy, and he leaves very big shoes to fill. But we will have him with us for a while, and we will enjoy that tremendously. So we've got a lot of work cut out to replace our current Commissioner Mosby and our Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. I'll second that. Yeah, really appreciate the ongoing service. Okay, I want to talk for a moment about things going on at the federal level. Obviously, we've got a new administrator for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Michael Reagan. I'll note, I think most people know Administrator Reagan was formerly the head of the Secretary of the Environment, head of the department in North Carolina. So he comes from a similar state background. And I think that means that we're going to see some real changes in terms of the working relationship between state environmental agencies and U.S. EPA. Frankly, that relationship had gotten pretty strained under the former administration. And having Michael Reagan as administrator for EPA, I think is going to be very welcome in terms of just improving the working relationship between federal and state levels of government as we move forward. And to that end, Administrator Reagan in his first public external speaking engagement was with the Spring Meeting of the Environmental Council of the States, which occurred this, was it this past week? I'm losing track of time. I'm sorry. I think it was the week before. But he spoke to the Spring Meeting of ECOS and again, really emphasized several themes. One was strengthening the working relationship between EPA and the states, but also noted two other things that I want to comment on. One is rebuilding morale and capacity within the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. Very committed to that. Spending a lot of time with managers and staff at EPA, emphasizing the importance of the people of EPA and really welcome seeing that from the administrator. They've lost a lot of people, and there's some capacity to rebuild there. And I think he's a great person to lead that effort. The second thing that he stressed in his remarks was really work around environmental justice. And echoing that, President Biden and Congress just put some significant new resources into funding for environmental justice work in the American Rescue Plan Act that just passed Congress. So a significant increase in funding for each day work to help with communities that have been affected by the pandemic, dealing with environmental burdens that they face as well that have made some of those effects of the pandemic even harder for those communities. And then also additional funding for air quality monitoring around the country. Again, recognizing that there's a relationship between the air pollution burden that communities have suffered along with the public health effects of the pandemic. So really, I'm pleased to see Administrator Reagan take the reins at EPA. And I think we already, working with Region 10 of EPA, have engaged on a number of important issues for Oregon here recently. And I'll just mention those briefly. One of those is Bradford Island, the cleanup site that the commission has heard about previously, by far the worst PCB contamination site that we've got in the Pacific Northwest. And really, right next to an area where we have significant Native American fishing rights being exercised. And so real serious health concerns about the potential impacts of that site. And we renewed our urging of EPA on the part of Oregon, Washington, and the Accumen Nation for EPA to list that site under the Federal Superfund Program. So ongoing conversations between the states, tribes, and EPA on that front. Similarly, we've been having conversations with EPA leadership and the Nesspurse Nation around work to reduce mercury contamination in the Snake River, particularly in the Hell's Canyon Reach involving Idaho Power and immediately downstream of that reach where the Sturgeon Fishery a fishery that has been very important for the Nesspris Nation over, over is part of their treaty rights, has been shut down for a number of years because of high mercury levels. And so we're working actively with EPA and the Nesspris Tribe and Idaho Power and the state of Idaho to see what we can do to start to reverse that situation in terms of high mercury levels in the Snake River. And hopeful that there'll be some new resources to devote to that effort here in the near future. At the Ecos meeting a week and a half ago, I also presented two presentations, actually moderated one panel and then co-presented on harmful algal blooms and work around harmful algal blooms here in Oregon that we're doing jointly with the Oregon Health Authority and communities drinking water systems around the state. And I'll mention that the Oregon Legislature just took some actions, which I don't think are final yet, are still in process to provide some additional resources around monitoring, including a couple of positions for DEQ and some additional lab equipment to improve our turnaround times for monitoring of cyanotoxins in surface waters around the state. We are concerned this summer with the wildfires that with all the rains, the normal rains that we see will have a flush of nutrients into some of these waterways that could lead to a worse than normal year in terms of cyanotoxins and harmful algal blooms. So hoping to try to get some of that monitoring capacity in place quickly and be better prepared for, for what may be a bad year this, this coming summer. I also presented a presentation on the low-cost air quality monitors that our lab has developed the sensor program that has allowed us to put a significantly greater number of air quality monitors out into communities, particularly to help with wildfire season and to provide better information to the public around what levels of particulate matter are in particular areas of communities near and around the areas suffering from wildfires. So again, Oregon's kind of at the cutting edge in development of some of that technology. And so it was an opportunity to share some of the great work that our lab has done with other states and with EPA as well. While I'm speaking of the lab, I'll note the lab just got its national accreditation renewed during the pandemic, which was, you know, quite an achievement to be able to do that for the most part remotely. And then let me transition and talk a little bit about some highlights from particular programs at DEQ. First of all, in the air quality arena, again, in the face of pandemic and remote work, the air quality staff in, around the agency have been able to continue to reduce the backlog in air quality permitting. Where we were at about a 21% backlog, that's been brought down to about 18%, which may not sound like a big change, but actually that's a fairly significant reduction. And we're continuing to be headed in the right direction in terms of that core work of the agency. Also on, we did, heard a great presentation this morning from Coriand Wind about the Clean Fuels Program. Related to that, our Clean Vehicle Rebate Program. We've now issued 9,350 rebates for clean vehicles in Oregon. And 1,280 of those are rebates that were issued to low and moderate income households. Given that we had projected around a 10% going to the Charge Ahead Program, we're substantially above that in what we've gotten out to low and moderate income households. And I think we want to see that number come up even higher. So, but I'm pleased to see it as high as it is. And also mention, over 2,000 of those rebates are what we call point of sale rebates that were given by automobile dealers at the time the vehicle was sold. So that's also an important metric for the program. We, in order for that program to really succeed, we need the dealers to be working with us in that. So to see so many of the rebates actually go at the door, so to speak, at the time the vehicle sold is great and a significant accomplishment for the program. In the water quality program, I want to just mention two things. In the written director's report, you'll see some materials around the spill program with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the federal hydroelectric power system. And you know, in general, what that shows is that the program's working as designed. The Corps has been spilling additional water to help with juvenile salmon survival in the Columbia. The agreement between the Corps in the state of Oregon that commits the Corps to higher levels of spill during the spring, primarily during the spring, but a little bit during the summer season also ends after 2021. And so there will be an effort to, to try to reach a new agreement with the Corps around spill. I'm not, that's being led by the governor's office, not by DEQ. But it is relevant to DEQ because it needs to fit with the spill waiver that the commission authorized. So we're keeping an eye on that and we'll be working with the governor's office to figure out what that program looks like after 2021. Oregon has refiled litigation over the operation of the power system. And so that continues on also in the spill. A potential spill agreement could come out of that litigation. I don't know. It's not, that's not, again, that's governor's office at this point, not DEQ. And then I'll mention also, we're headed into the triennial review, the once every three-year review of Oregon's water quality standards. And this is, we're opening, and I think it is maybe just opened, a public comment period for people to identify priorities for any changes in Oregon water quality standards. So we'll be hearing from the public about that. And we'll be coming back to the commission, I think at the July meeting, to talk with the commission about what we heard and what priorities are. But that will probably identify some additional rulemaking that we propose the commission undertake, because that's how the standards would be, the water quality standards would be changed. So any questions on any of that before I go on? I'm going to talk a little bit about some specific projects in some of the regions next. Not, not seen hands. Okay.
So Director, just to kind of go with the flow of your presentation here, as is often the case, you know, you just give us some highlights as you move through the report. We don't address absolutely everything in here. Would now be a good time to ask questions about, you know, kind of this far in your report?
Chair George, this would be a fine time to ask questions. I am going to talk a little bit about a couple of specific things in the eastern region, northwest region, and a few things at headquarters, but this is a fine time for questions.
Great. Well, so I just wanted to ask a little bit about the landfill gas emissions rulemaking. Again, we heard some comments from some impacted citizens, certainly something that has been discussed in a variety of contexts at the EQC. And so maybe we could just do a brief highlight on that work.
Thank you, Chair George. Glad to talk about that. And there are a couple of things going on there. We heard some commentary this morning about neighbors concerned about riverbed landfill and methane emissions from that facility. There is, there are several permit actions pending for riverbed landfill for their air quality permit. There is a potential permit modification. And then there is a proposed permit renewal. And which is what I think you heard about some this morning. At the same time that specific work is going on, there are also some pending EPA enforcement actions concerning riverbank that, that EPA is working with DEQ on. But bigger picture, the rulemaking around landfills and landfill methane emissions. But the thrust of that rulemaking is for Oregon, for you by rule, to adopt new rules, new requirements for landfills in Oregon, to essentially meet best practices that are currently required in the state of Washington and the state of California for reducing methane emissions from landfills. This was part of the governor's executive order. And Michael Orman talked at a high level about that rulemaking. That'll be coming to the commission in, I can't remember if it's September or November, but it's coming this fall. So it's coming pretty soon to the commission. And that will set new requirements for how landfills are operated and how they manage to reduce fugitive methane emissions. So that could be relevant, at least in the longer term, also to riverbank.
Yes, and to capturing some of that methane that isn't, isn't captured today. Well, thank you for taking a moment just to do that, as it does, you know, have some interrelation to some of the issues that were addressed today.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time, or should we keep going? All right, seeing none, we'll go back to you, Director.
Okay, thank you, Chair George. So a couple of things in our eastern region. First of all, Easter Day Farm. So formerly known as Lost Valley, this is the large confined animal feeding operation that is located in the, in the Yumitilla-Moro area. And as people will recall, the prior operator of this site had significant operational problems and ended up going bankrupt. And so the facility is not currently operating. The lands around the facility are being farmed and I believe are being irrigated. Easter Day is a family from, primarily from Washington that operates a number of agricultural operations in that state that is applied to restart the confined animal feeding operation. And has applications pending with the Department of Agriculture and DEQ. And if you'll recall briefly, this is a program that where Department of Agriculture is the lead, but DEQ also has to sign off on the permits. So, and there's a memorandum of agreement between the two agencies on how we work together. So we have been working with the Department of Agriculture. The several things have happened with the Easter Day family. Once, and I'm not going to go into all sorts of detail here, but the senior Mr. Easter Day had an unfortunate accident and passed away, was killed in an automobile accident. And his son, who really succeeded to leadership in the companies, is in the midst of some difficulties with some of the, some of the purchasers of agricultural products from their facilities in Washington. And I'm not, again, not going to get into the details, but he, his operate, a number of his operations and companies are in bankruptcy, have recently gone into bankruptcy. And so DEQ and the Oregon Department of Agriculture are investigating and doing our due diligence to fully understand what the implications of this might be for the proposed operation in Oregon. And so we're in the midst of those investigations and conversations. And we are not going to be ready to issue a draft permit until we've answered the questions we have about the stability of the permit applicant financially to really be able to carry out this operation. So that's about all I have to say for today. Just let you know that that's, that's going on.
Thank you, Director. One thing I would just like to note from the written report and, you know, from previous discussions, one thing that I'm very pleased to see is that DEQ and Department of Ag, you know, working together, learning from experience out there, the, the moving to the new CAFO permits in two steps, right? With the first step being review and approval of the plan, but then, you know, you don't get your whole permit. The second, there needs to be inspection of construction completion, completion, and a secondary approval after onsite review to actually oper, operate the facility. And so, you know, giving the agencies the opportunity to actually get there on the ground and see that the plans that have been laid out are actually being sufficiently implemented. So, you know, just from, you know, citizens of the state of Oregon perspective, I'm very pleased to see that so that we are, we're learning from our experience.
Thanks, Chair George. One other thing going on in the eastern region is, is the Klamath. And I'm not going to talk a lot about the Klamath because I could, I could go on pretty much all afternoon. But I do want the commission to be aware of two things. One, it's going to be a very bad water year in the Klamath. And frankly, there is nowhere near enough water to go around for all the tribal irrigation and other uses of water. And so we are in close communication with Oregon Water Resources Department, but also California and tribes and interior, trying to work through how to, how to get through this, what is going to be a very tough year. Is, one component of that is Upper Klamath Lake and water quality issues in Upper Klamath Lake. You all recall, we did a visit to Walker Farms in the lake, what, a couple of years ago now. We and the Oregon Department of Agriculture have continued to work to improve water quality in Upper Klamath Lake. And I will say that our monitoring, we have some monitoring that shows that phosphorus levels in the Williamson River, main tributary into the lake have been getting a bit better. However, the Klamath Tribe's, you know, main fishery, which is Chom and Cup to the suckers, continue to struggle. And there is a recent video presentation that the Klamath Tribes put together called Killing the Klamath, which you can all go on YouTube and take a look at if you're interested. It's, you can also get a link through the Klamath Tribe's website. It's a little less than half an hour and it gives tribal perspective on how close they are to completely losing that fishery and having those fish go extinct. They are listed, not only as threatened, but endangered under the Federal Endangered Species Act. So it is a very serious situation. So where I'm headed with this is just to let you know that the Klamath Tribal Council has asked to meet with DEQ and the Department of Agriculture about water quality issues in and above the lake. And we are going to be sitting down with them in the near future to talk about next steps. What else can we do to try to help with the water quality situation? So I think I'll just leave it there, but I just, I wanted folks to be aware of that. And the video presentation was broadcast on Southern Oregon Public Broadcasting about a week ago. And you also will see me, I was interviewed and I appear in a couple of segments of the video as well. Okay. So one other specific thing I want to talk about in the northwest region of DEQ is Northwest Metals. Northwest Metals is the automobile. What's the right word? Well, they're the automobile wrecker shredder recycler facility that had the very serious fire in North Portland a couple of years ago. The owner of that facility made a decision a number of months ago to move and submitted an application for an air quality permit at a new location in, also in North Portland, but a number of miles to the west of the current facility. DEQ just issued an air quality permit for the new operation. There was significant public interest in this permit. We had a couple of very well attended and public hearings on the permit, a lot of public engagement around it, a lot of testimony. And I want you all to know that this was given very close attention by Northwest Region staff and managers and the regional administrator, and ultimately by me, sitting down and going through the permit in detail and really thinking about how to assure that the permit is as protective as possible of public health and the environment. And I, so we added a number of things to the permit that are not typically, have not been added to these permits in the past, and we will be watching this facility very closely. There is a history of operation of violations that is a concern. And but we also were under a court, we were in the middle of a court proceeding over this also, where the judge had really pushed us to get a decision on the permit out the door. So so that's that. Any questions about that before I go on?
No, it sounds like that there, there's the work on the permit that has been issued. Is it just that one air quality permit? Or it sounds like there's also work remaining to some degree.
Thank you, Chair George. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. The permit that was issued is the air quality permit for the facility. But we also will be working on a solid waste permit for the facility. And that will be important, and I'd encourage the public to be paying attention to that permit also because some of the issues around things like fire risk, we can address more directly through the solid waste permit than we were able to through the air permit. So we will be looking at those issues through the lens of the solid waste permit also. And it's a good example of, you know, a situation that we see arise often on complicated sites where we need to work cross media to address the risk to public health and the environment. And we are thinking in those terms as we, as we work on Northwest Metals and frankly, a number of other facilities in the region.
Thank you.
Okay, very briefly, a few things of note in DEQ headquarters. I'm not providing any formal report to you at this meeting on work at DEQ around diversity, equity, and inclusion and environmental justice. But there is a lot going on. And there's a lot going on both within DEQ and also at the enterprise level in the state. We've got, the governor has committed additional resources to enterprise level across the state enterprise work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that is being frankly, very helpful to us in terms of supporting some of the work that we're doing here that's specific to DEQ.
Director, briefly, forgive my interruption, but for those who might not be familiar with that term, could you just share a little bit, when you say enterprise level work on diversity, equity, and inclusion? You know, what should that mean to folks?
Well, the objective of this, the enterprise level work means that it's going on not just at DEQ, but at state agencies across the whole spectrum of state agencies, led by the governor's office in the Department of Administrative Services, which is kind of the umbrella agency for Oregon state agencies. You know, the diversity, equity, and inclusion work is really work around making sure that our workforce is diverse, that we honor values of diversity and equity in the work that we do and how we, how we work together with each other and with communities. And similarly, in terms of inclusion, that we work, we're not just working for communities, but we work with them. And we have, it's part of this work, you know, we want to increase the diversity of the workforce and leadership at DEQ. And so that runs the gamut from internships, building relationships with organizations, recruiting, how we bring people into the agency, how we support people, career pathways that we create, training that we do for staff and managers and leadership that are here now. There's a whole spectrum of work. And obviously, the urgency of this work has become more apparent with events of the past year. And I think the desire on the part of the governor and the part of leadership in the agencies, not just the EQ, to really show progress in this area is very strong right now, and we're spending a lot of time on it. So I'll provide a more, I'll provide more of our reports to you at the next commission meeting. But I, I, there's so much going on in the agency, I did want to note that it's getting a lot of attention right now. And we have a lot of committed staff in the agency who are devoting time and energy to that work that I want to acknowledge. Last thing I'm going to say, and then I think I'll end the director's report there is, I'm not sure if she's still on, but I want to thank Jennifer Weigel for having been the interim deputy director for the past four months, four plus months. She's done a great job. And I think it's been a good opportunity for her to experience another level of leadership and complexity in the agency. She obviously, Jennifer's been on the leadership team since she became deputy administrator for water quality, but she's done a great job. I've handed her a couple of very difficult chestnuts to have to grapple with, and she's, she's done it flawlessly. So really appreciate her help. And I will note that next week, Leah Felden will return and Jennifer will be able to start transitioning back to her more normal role as deputy water quality administrator. Jennifer, do you want to say a word or two? But thank, first of all, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Chair George and Richard, thank you. Thank you for those kind words. It's, it has, as Richard speculated, as it might have been for me, it has been a really great experience and a really great opportunity to not only just see things from a different vantage point, but I think one of the, my takeaways is, is just having the opportunity to learn more about kind of how, and see things from a different perspective about how the agency operates and to also have additional opportunities, excuse me, to interact with our different media programs and learn more about what they do. And, and, you know, we often, as we, I've, as folks know, I've worked most of my career in water quality. It's, you know, we know it and we say it, but to experience it is something else, to know that all the issues and challenges that we have aren't really so different. They may operate under different regulations and statutes, but we're all dealing with the same flavors of challenges. And, you know, trying to do the best work we can in what's often very complex and challenging environments to get to the outcomes that we want to get to. So it's been a great experience and I just want to thank everybody for being so supportive, coming in cold to so many different topics and issues. Everybody's been really wonderful in helping patients with questions and helping me do the job while Leah's taken her well-earned and deserved leave. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thanks, thanks, Jennifer. And Chair George, that concludes the director's report.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments for the director before we go on to our last public agenda item today? All right, don't see any. All right, so we are ready for the budget and legislative update. And welcome, we have several presenters who have a piece of this or available for questions. So welcome, everybody.
Okay, maybe I will go ahead and kick us off. Good afternoon, Chair George and members of the commission. I'm Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager. I'm here today with my team to share a legislative and budget update with you. We know we're a little behind schedule, so we'll be efficient. So we have Annalisa Batia, our senior legislative advisor, Matt Davis, our senior air quality legislative analyst, Abby Beduris, our senior land quality legislative analyst, and Ryan Hoof, our senior water quality legislative analyst. So our agenda today, we're going to do some high-level context setting for the legislative session and sort of how we're approaching the budget. Then we want to walk through key bills of interest and some of the budget priorities for each of the program areas. As always, we welcome your questions and comments. We haven't had the opportunity to present to you as a team for quite a while, so we're really looking forward to this chance to share what's going on. So next slide, please. Okay, so starting off with just kind of the legislative session that we're in right now. You know, I would say this has been a bit of an unprecedented legislative session for a number of reasons. First of all, there's just been a huge wave of new legislators in Salem, and we almost have 19 new members. There's one who will get sworn in here any day now. And so it's just, you have a bunch of new people who are sort of learning the ropes all at once. This has actually been one of probably the most racially diverse group of legislators that we've had in Oregon, which is really exciting. I think soon to be a female majority legislature. So that's another interesting, exciting milestone. And a lot of really terrific new members on both sides of the aisle throughout the state. I've just been really impressed by the caliber of folks who are coming to the legislature. So that's been great. There's been a really intense workload, I think, you know, sort of even before session started, legislators were meeting to discuss COVID wildfire, sort of economic fallout. So they've been, you know, meeting and working. And this session, I believe Annalisa's told me, 2,400 bills have dropped. That's about, in a typical long session, about 3,000 bills are introduced and 700 become law. So, you know, sort of, it's really kind of on pace with a typical session. But at the same time, you know, things are moving fairly slow in terms of actually moving bills through the process. We're, all committees are meeting remotely. I think it was a bit rocky, honestly, in the beginning, like all of us adjusting to sort of the online format. But I think it's, it's getting smoother. And I think one of the really positive things that I hope sticks around is the opportunity for more community members throughout the state to participate in committee hearings that might not have the opportunity to drive to Salem. So I think that's been one really good thing that's happened. You know, there continues to be a fair bit of this political polarization, and that's something we see nationally, and it's certainly playing out a bit in Oregon. Democrats still have a super majority in Oregon, which means they can pass bills that raise revenue without Republican support. This is both the House and Senate. But that also creates a lot of tension, and there has been, you know, already sort of a mini walkout from the Senate Republicans. And I think that sort of fear pervades, pervades things. And so that's just part of the dynamic that is going on with the session. I do want to just take a quick second to actually thank and give kudos to my team. They are working really long hours right now with this legislative session. They're highly regarded, they're called on frequently to provide expert testimony. And I hear from legislators and lobbyists alike, just how much they really appreciate the DEQ team. So I just want to take a second to thank my team. Yeah, yes. Stephanie, next slide, please. So want to spend just a second talking about the budget landscape. The budget picture has been really a roller coaster over the past year, I think, probably for everyone. You know, the effects of the pandemic, you know, many Oregonians and businesses suffered major economic losses. Early on, we saw a major drop to lottery fund revenues. We had to make other one-time general fund cuts in this biennium to meet a governor's revenue target. We've also sort of experienced an unprecedented wildfire season, as you are all aware, and kind of the scale of destruction that we have not seen. And that actually continues to reverberate around the budget because I think just sort of the state liabilities are still a bit unknown. And I think that is on the minds of legislators. You know, sort of despite all of this, I guess one silver lining is tax collections have remained strong. So I think that has helped lessen some of the economic pain for the state. And I think a bit of very good news for us is we've learned that Oregon will receive about 2.6 billion in federal fiscal recovery funds to cover state programs and service costs. We don't know yet what sideboards are going to be around those funds, but I think that will certainly make this budgeting cycle easier because we were really looking at more of a cuts budget. This, earlier this week Wednesday, the co-chairs of Ways and Means released a framework for the 2123 budget. We've all been sort of waiting for that. They intend to reserve 20% of the federal funds, about $520 million for future use. Because these are one-time funds, these federal funds, they are ideally going to apply them to one-time purposes. The budget target for natural resources is essentially a 1% reduction. And how that will get applied to the various agencies really isn't known yet. It's, and I think again, still unknown what priorities will be in play. Just to put that 1% into perspective, the governor's recommended budget in terms of how they applied a reduction to our agency was more in the neighborhood of 4%. So this, this is an improvement from that situation. DEQ will be presenting its budget to Ways and Means on April 5th and 7th. We don't expect any real budget decisions to be made until the May forecast. And so the programs, I'm going to turn it over to them in just a minute to cover some of our budget priorities. But I did, I was just gonna, I think I'm going to skip over this fairly quickly. Stephanie, can you go to the next slide? I was just going to give you, we have two sort of little budget slides here, and I really just wanted to give you the opportunity to sort of visually see the program comparison from our 1921 legislatively adopted budget versus the 2123 governor's recommended budget. And you sort of see, there's just really sort of a very modest increase. That sort of reflects a lot of different things, both our policy option packages, some changes to the current service level and other sort of roll-up costs and so on, but gives you a little bit of that perspective. Stephanie, can you move to the next slide? And then this is sort of just another viewpoint of the budget in terms of our overall expenditures and the And this is really the total budget. And as you'll see, sort of the non-limited, obviously, is a, is a large category. That's our Clean Water SRF. That can sometimes skew the perspective of our budget a little bit when people look at total dollar figure and not realize that a big, big chunk of that is going actually toward this, this other programmatic issue. And the other thing that we, isn't really reflected here, but in the air quality program is, always looks a bit bigger than the other programs because of pass-through dollars that we use for the EV rebate and the BW funds. So we are going to talk about this a lot more detail for anyone out there watching in our Ways and Means presentation. And, and I'm happy to dig into this if any of you want to talk further about these details. But I want to go ahead and move on to our next slide and let the programs talk about some of the good work that's happening there.
Great. Thanks Nancy. Good afternoon, Chair George. Members of the Commission, for the record, Matt Davis. I'm, for the sake of time, I'm not going to talk about the policy option packages because we've discussed those with you in previous meetings. But if there are questions about any of the four you see on the screen that were included in the governor's budget, I'm, I'm more than happy to provide any detail. I think I'll focus my few remarks on some of the bills of interest. There are approximately fifty bills this session related to air quality and greenhouse gas emissions. I've called out a few that I think are particularly noteworthy because of their impact to our work or just the level of attention they're getting during session. So the first is House Bill 2814. This bill is a continuation of the conversation that began with you all a year ago when you received a petition to regulate indirect sources of emissions. So the bill, which is kind of, many of the same proponents that were behind the petition are, are working actively on this bill. The bill directs the Commission and the Department to develop a program and rules to regulate indirect sources of emissions. The, although not necessarily reflected in the bill right now, the conversation surrounding the bill is largely focused on diesel engine emissions and, and those emissions in the Portland metropolitan area and other denser parts of the state. House Bill 2020, I'm sorry, I should say that bill is still in its first committee. And there, it has received two pretty lively publicly, public hearings. I think it'll get another one before it is potentially worked out of committee. House Bill 2021, you've also heard quite a bit about this topic already today. So I might just kind of breeze over it. The bill, you know, sets clean energy targets for the state's largest electric companies. The, the bill largely envisions the, the program and rules being implemented by the PUC. But of course, DEQ certainly cares about emissions from the electricity sector and also has a role in, in monitoring the emissions from those, those companies. House Bill 2165 is Governor Brown's transportation electrification bill. And one element of the bill particularly important to DEQ is an extension of the EV rebate program. Absent the bill, that program is set to, to sunset at the end of 2023. That bill moved out of its first committee unanimously and is now waiting a public hearing in the Joint Committee on Transportation. Two bill, two bills and a lot of conversation related to additional study and exploration in the climate space are Senate Bill 392 and House Bill 2479. The first directs DEQ to study fugitive methane emissions from the production, transportation, storage, and use of natural gas. And House Bill 2479 directs the Department to study sources of black carbon emissions in the state. Black carbon is a part of particulate matter and is a short-term climate forcer. Both of those bills have made it out of their first committee and are in Ways and Means. And then finally, the, the bill number on wildfire seems to be changing every day, every day. This is already out of date, but the point being, there's a very large conversation about wildfire response, recovery, and mitigation. And from the air quality perspective, a part of that conversation is measuring the smoke impacts from wildfire and helping communities become resilient to those smoke impacts. So I think I'll leave it at that. I don't, I don't know if we're taking questions as we go, Nancy, or if you want to.
I would, I guess defer to the Chair, but we could continue to move on and ask questions at the end, or what, what's your preference?
Yeah, so unless it's, you know, it's like a short clarifying question, let's go ahead and hold our questions to the end.
Okay, next slide, Stephanie.
Thank you, Chair George. Thanks, Matt. And members of the Commission, I'm Abby Beduris, Legislative Analyst for the Land Quality Division. It's also been a really busy session for land quality, probably forty or fifty bills as well that are, could bring new work or other impacts on land quality programs. I'll highlight just a few and then I'm going to dig a little bit deeper into the recycling bill. First, Senate Bill 57, an agency bill, and the corresponding POP 133. Senate Bill 57 will modernize the fees that partially fund the oversight of hazardous waste generators and the investigation and cleanup of contaminated sites that are contaminated with hazardous substances. Fee revenue has declined and they don't, no longer sustain the programs. On the fees in Senate Bill 57 are what we call tipping fees. Tipping is when you dispose of hazardous waste at a permitted hazardous waste landfill. There's just one, the Ken Waste Management Facility in Arlington, Oregon. These fees are paid by any entities like hazardous waste generators that dispose of hazardous waste at that landfill. That bill's moved, moved unanimously out of the Senate Energy and Environment Committee and now it's waiting to be scheduled in Ways and Means. Next, we have, I'll mention just two standalone policy option packages. POP 132 requests other fund contract limitation to spend general obligation funds to replenish our industrial orphan site account. Replenishing that account allows us to do the investigation and cleanup of contaminated sites where there's uncontrolled hazardous substance releases that pose risk to human health and the environment and where no other source of funding is available to address that risk. This is something we do every four years. POP 134 is a simple POP. It makes two limited duration positions that we got in 2019 permanent. So they can implement the solid waste orphan program. That's to clean up solid waste disposal sites, once again, where there's no, the owner is unable to pay to clean up those sites. An example of that, where we've used these kinds of funds is the former KFD landfill in Portland. That's been transformed into Cully Park and that was partially supported by solid waste orphan funds. As you know, we've spoken to you quite a few times about the emergency response program here at DEQ and the chronic problems with inadequate dedicated funding there. We have unsuccessfully sought general fund for the past few sessions in that bill. And we have Senate Bill 3269, that's sponsored by one of our new legislators, Representative Hudson, that would require DEQ to do a study and develop strategies to fund the emergency response program and report to the Legislature by 2022. There'll be a public hearing and a work session on that bill in early April. But the real hot topic, next slide, please, for land quality is related to recycling. Over the past couple of years, I've presented to the Commission to update you about the issues of recycling, the Recycling Steering Committee that we convened and the bill that we pursued through the Governor's Office. House Bill 2065 was the result of that work. But as things sometimes go in Salem because of workload and legislator interest, the effort to modernize our system is now being addressed through a Senate bill, Senate Bill 582. That bill was gutted and stuffed with the, the updated version of the D, the bill that DEQ moved, 2065. As you can see on the slide, just a quick reminder, our recycling system faces challenges. The policies that guided are decades old and were not built for the materials that we put in our recycling bins today. There's widespread public confusion, increasing costs to the public and less material being recycled. Some inequities in the system in who gets service as well as for the workers. And finally, the companies that make these products and have the greatest ability to do anything are basically absent from the system. The people of Oregon expect more. Next slide, please.
Just very briefly, Abby and Director Whitman, I'd like to pause, not for today, we're under some time pressure. But sometime when we are talking about recycling again and the changes that are needed, I'd like to hear a little bit about the process, you know, whereby what are effectively single-use plastics or things that are represented as recyclable plastics. You know, the market by which that ends up in countries where they're not being recycled. They may just be dumped or they may even be burned. I'd like to just understand what control, if any, Oregon has about plastics recycling. And so not a conversation for today, but it's something that I want to understand better and understand how Oregon manages that better. So maybe I can do some follow-up on the side.
Thank you, Chair George. And this bill directly addresses that. And I'll touch on a couple of those things right now. So 57, well, 582 is actually called the Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act. To, and, and it will really make us a leader again in, in Oregon. And it creates a shared responsibility system in Oregon that assigns new roles to producers of printed paper, packaging, and single-use footwear. While it assigns new roles, it does keep the parts of the system intact that work, like roles for local governments and service providers. And it is consistent with this global trend to make producers responsible for what happens to the products and packaging they sell. It does maintain, I'll point out, a level playing field for in-state businesses because it regulates the producers of products regardless of where they're from. But if they sell products into Oregon's and they end up in our waste system. Oregon is one of several states that are running bills this year. So what the system does, and I'll get to your question a little bit, Chair, is it creates a uniform list of materials that are collected for recycling in Oregon regardless of where you work or live. It expands collection opportunities to multi-tenant properties and parts of the state that don't have service. It provides financial support for making these systems reliable. It makes, ensures that materials are collected responsibly by making producers responsible for ensuring that their products go to end markets that, that recycle them. It ensures materials float, that we have clean materials that move through the system so that they are recyclable. That's one, been one of the problems. It requires that co-mingled materials be sorted at facilities that meet standards. So there'll be a new permitting system for our processing facilities and transparency about where those materials go, the final destination. It addresses equity there by expanding collection opportunities to people without them. Requires culturally responsive outreach and consumer feedback. Equalizes the cost for urban and rural Oregon and addresses some equity considerations with requiring provisions of living wage for processing facility workers. And it creates the shared responsibility model that aligns with who benefits and who pays for the system. And finally, it closes, it helps the environment by closing the door on irresponsible exports and plastic pollution. It increases the quality of the materials, available for materials because recycling is actually when we use the material and it stops leakage when it goes to another country, so it doesn't end up marine debris. And it incentivizes environmentally responsible material selection and product design. We can't have a modern recycling system without bringing the producers into this system. Senate Bill 582 had three days of public hearing in Senate Energy and Environment. It's up for a work session on the eighth of April. We're working with the Committee Chair now on some amendments to address some issues raised in testimony and other conversations we've had. And in fact, we're hosting a walkthrough of that, those possible amendments this afternoon. I'll stop there, but Chair George, I'd love to come back and talk about this more whenever you like.
That would be fantastic and it sounds like a heck of a good start. So we're very pleased to hear that that is proceeding. And Abby, maybe you and Stephanie can follow up with me and I can just hear a little bit more detail about where this is going. Great news.
Great. Okay, Abby, are you finished? Okay, moving us next slide, please. Water quality, everybody's favorite topic.
Great, thanks Nancy. And good afternoon, Chair George and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ryan Hoof, Legislative and Policy Analyst for Water Quality Programs. I'm going to apologize in advance as I think I'll just do a little bit of bouncing around amongst some of the bullets on this slide. Because I do want to start with a couple of the budget priorities identified in the right-hand column. A key focus as we navigate this session has been to minimize reductions and maintain current service levels for a lot of our water quality work. And as we don't yet know how some of the federal stimulus and wildfire recovery dollars may impact the state budget, this continues to be a focus for some of our, our work. The Governor's Recommended Budget identifies 11.5 FTE and potential reductions for water quality programs. Two of those are due to federal fund revenue shortfalls that would affect our permitting program work involving compliance verification and data management. 4.5 FTE are included as general fund reductions and hit upon various positions across our subprograms and water quality. And five FTE are due to projected, or at least initially projected lottery fund revenue shortfalls. So I do want to point out that POP 125 would restore those five lottery fund reduction positions. Restoring these positions would really help DEQ maintain ongoing water quality monitoring activities and some current service level support really around non-point source pollution reduction efforts. In addition, our Clean Water Act, Section 401, water quality certification work, particularly that associated with hydroelectric facilities, is also in need of an increased fee revenue or it will have to reduce staffing in the next biennia. This is a statewide hydroelectric program that's coordinated as a multi-agency effort. And House Bill 2143, identified in the top left, and an associated policy option package in the Water Resources Department's budget. We both simplify a fee structure supporting this work, but also it would increase revenues in order to maintain current service levels, both at DEQ as well as Water Resources Department and ODFW. If no action is taken, taken to increase revenue, DEQ would have to reduce some of our services in this area and could have an impact on our ability to engage in some important work in that, in that program. Also, under the category of budget priorities, I also want to point out our water quality policy option packages that were included in the GRB and that involve some capacity building and program modernization. In particular, Policy Option Package 121, which is designed to address various resource needs in our TMDL and Clean Water Management Section. The Governor's Recommended Budget includes a recommendation to partially fund this package. Originally, it was four positions, but the recommendation is to fund two new positions. These positions would increase capacity for TMDL development projects, particularly in the eastern region. Many of those that were referenced earlier by Director Whitman in his comments about Hell's Canyon and Snake River also would include a position to help support requested enhancements around TMDL implementation capacity specific to the Willamette Basin. POP 124, just briefly mentioned that this would authorize our, our SRF, Clean Water SRF program, additional limitation for use of their admin fund for the purchase of a new loan management software system. Otherwise, within the category of just general bills of interest, and I don't mean to be competitive with my colleagues, but we're currently tracking a little bit over sixty bills, I believe, with the water quality-related nexus. And a couple of those that I want to point out, I can skip over 2143 since I already mentioned that in relation to our hydroelectric program work. But Bill 3090 is really related to, and I should say this passed out of House Water Committee and would appropriate general fund dollars so that we could restart the septic repair and replacement program that had been established in 2016. This programming is to provide non-traditional low-interest loans for, for low-income households, small businesses across the state. And it's particularly an unfortunate time for this program to have run out of funding when so many people across the state are facing hardships. So this bill would appropriate $2 million, has received widespread support, not only in the House Water Committee, but it's also been discussed amongst the wildfire recovery committees as well. And then House Bills 3102 and 3093, these are bills associated with Harmful Algal Blooms work that Director Whitman already sort of emphasized the importance of that work and the urgency. I'll just note that the two positions and equipment that were associated with House Bill 3102 not only passed out of committee, but they were included in the budget reconciliation bill that passed out of Ways and Means. It hasn't passed floor votes yet, but the fact that they're included It hasn't passed four votes yet, but the fact that they're including that for funding beginning this biennia, for the last couple of months of this biennia, really emphasizes the importance seen by many stakeholders and legislators for that work. And then lastly, oh, I should say, thirty ninety three is a companion bill to thirty one oh two, because this would also implement some recommendations from a stakeholder work group that was convened by the House Water Committee. But thirty ninety three would establish additional statewide capacity for coordination and to assess the factors that contribute to harmful algal blooms around the state. This would include one position for OHA for coordination work. It would also include one position for DEQ, specifically a water quality analyst to help look at predictive modeling, water body specific factors and contributing factors, and then to be able to use that work to prioritize and look at strategies that would help reduce harmful algal bloom occurrence or severity. That bill is scheduled for a work session next week. And then just briefly, one of the other smattering of bills that I thought might be of interest, I wanted to mention twenty five ninety four, which involves a requirement for the Board of Forestry and Department of Forestry to periodically review rules related to forest land streams that involve domestic domestic water use and be able to update those rules to make sure they're consistent with current science and best management practices. And the bill amendments that are currently being considered would make sure that Department of Forestry is consulting with both DEQ and OHA to review that that work and the development of any recommendations. So with that, those are the water quality items that I wanted to mention. So I'll pass the baton off to Anna Lisa unless there's any specific questions right now. Thanks.
Next slide, please.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair George, members of the commission. For the record, I'm Anna Lisa Batia, DEQ Senior Legislative Advisor. It's certainly been a busy session so far, and there are many different agency management bills this go round typically for these type of bills that affect how DEQ operates as an agency. It it tends to be a bill that impacts other agencies as well. And so normally, the Department of Administrative Services is typically lead for engagement on those bills that affect those issues. But today, I do want to mention three bills that have a direct impact on DEQ. The first up actually is a DEQ bill. It's it's our bill that was put forward by the governor on our behalf, and that is Senate Bill fifty eight, which I think we've mentioned before. As you know, for the past four years, DEQ has been working on implementing our environmental data management system, EDMS. That is the IT upgrade that will modernize the way that DEQ provides business services to the public. And we are now at the point where the agency has to secure ongoing funding for the licensing fees and the maintenance costs of that system, which will be estimated at one point six million dollars per biennia. So what this bill would do would be allow to DEQ to recover those costs through the creation of an additional EDMS funding surcharge that would be put on any fee or invoice that's generated and paid through the program. So it would be one additional piece when you go to pay, pay whatever fee that you are paying for DEQ. The bill would also insert language to our general agency authority that would let us pass on the convenience fee that is charged when you are running a credit card transaction. So we would just act as a pass through of that fee. So far, this has actually passed through its initial committee. It's down in Ways and Means, so we expect it to be part of our budget conversation as it moves forward. And then POP one forty one is the companion POP to this language. So what it would do is include one point six million in other funds to cover those costs I mentioned, and it does not contain any positions. The next bill I want to mention is Senate Bill two eighty six, which was introduced by the governor as a proposal for changing the structure of the environment, the Environmental Justice Task Force. It would change that task force into a more formal staffed structure that would be part of DEQ and be called the Environmental Justice Council. That council would be hosted by the agency. We would be providing it with additional capacity. It would receive additional resources, and the legislation also makes a number of other changes. So it would allow other natural resource agencies to do things like consult with the council during rulemaking processes, get feedback on work any other agency is also doing. It would also allow other agencies to appoint a member of the council to rules and fiscal advisory committees as well. It would direct DEQ in consultation with the council, other natural resource agencies, local agencies, officials and other community representatives to conduct environmental vulnerability assessments to determine susceptibility to environmental burdens by bringing together existing and new data to identify highly impacted communities and vulnerable populations and environmental health disparities in identifying different areas, populations that may need additional considerations as DEQ and other agencies are doing our work. Director Whitman testified in support of this bill. There have been a lot of testimony, a lot of conversations around it, and that is up for a work session. It was supposed to be yesterday, and then there was some scheduling kind of snap views as floor session ran long, so now we're expecting it to move next week. This would have an impact on DEQ's budget. POP ninety was included in the Governor's Request Budget, and that would establish the Office of Environmental Justice within DEQ. It would also provide us with three new positions to support the work of the council and would include that the funding for the analysis that I mentioned. So all in total, that includes three million dollars in general fund and three positions. Last but not least, I just want to mention to to the council today or the commission this day, House Bill thirty three seventy two. This is a bill that was introduced by the speaker, and it's really aimed at clarifying and increasing DEQ's authority to consider compliance violation histories when we are considering a permit application, especially whether there is an egregious history of non-compliance with environmental requirements. So currently, we do have some general authority when we are issuing, modifying, suspending or revoking a permit to consider past violations. But that language is vague, and it actually only refers to violations of certain air quality and water quality programs. So if a permittee has a different history with violations of hazardous waste or solid waste or anything that's not listed, we we actually don't have the authority to necessarily consider that. It also doesn't directly address instances where the enforcement violations are still being appealed. So there's just some some vagueness in that language that this would aim at clarifying. It would include all DEQ programs and statute authorities that we could consider. It also allows us to request more information about a applicant's corporate officers, directors, so we can understand where there's different, different folks that are involved in making decisions for an applicant that may have a history with the department. So that has been, as I said, introduced by the speaker. There has been one public hearing. We expect it to move in a work session in the next couple of weeks. Last but not least, I just want to mention POP one forty three. You'll remember that in with the twenty nineteen budget, the legislature approved over fifty new positions at DEQ, and those were largely focused on our core functions, our permitting programs, different kind of projects, that sort of thing. This POP is aimed at the much needed central services positions that are required to help us support those other positions. So it would help us with HR, IT, payroll, other support functions created and needing support following this introduction of fifty new positions. So that POP contains one point six million dollars in other funds, six positions total, and it would be funded through agency indirect dollars. And with that, I will turn it back to Nancy or open it up for questions.
Yes, and that does conclude our formal presentation, Chair George. And I know we're over time, so I want to be respectful of your time. We're here available for questions now or anytime in the future. So just let us know what you'd like.
We do appreciate everybody being, moving through their their presentations. And Commissioner, if you have any comments or questions for the team at this time? No. All right, great work. We know that it's not going to stop for you for a while. May follow up with Abby, and maybe Stephanie can help us do that. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, team, and know that we are wishing you good luck and support as you continue through what is going to be another challenging session.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right, Director Whitman, unless we have any other issues, I think we can adjourn the public portion of our meeting and move on to our executive session. All right, sounds very good. I'll now entertain, I want to thank everybody who's helped us with this meeting yesterday and today. It was chock full of all kinds of information about the work going on. And we also want to all thank all the members of the public who took time out of their busy lives to share with us what is on their mind. That's always a very important part of our meetings. All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Chair George, so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there anyone opposed to adjourning the public session of the meeting? Hearing none, the motion passes, and we are adjourned with the public portion of our meeting at one oh five PM.
Thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your Commission Assistant. I will now close the recording for this meeting and then close the EQC meeting.